Oath of office, but we don't have a reappointment. Do we have to do a reappointment?
Yeah, they have to be sworn in.
So who's going to swear them in?
Board attorney?
Happy to.
Yeah, please.
And it would be Mr. Scalcione and Mr. Darian.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a little narrative, or am I going to wing it?
Well, I do, if I can find it here.
You can say it.
Probably safer.
I had, I had. I'm going to find it, I'm going to find it.
There it is.
Thank you, sir. I state your name.
I, Gregory Darian.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform all of the duties.
And justly perform all the duties.
Of the planning board of the borough of Oradell.
Of the planning board of the borough of Oradell.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome. Happy New Year, Mr. Chief.
Congratulations.
Couldn't read it on that business.
I.
I, Vincent Scalcione.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties of the office of the planning board of the borough of Oradell.
Perform all of the duties of the office of the planning board of the borough of Oradell.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Congratulations, Vince. Okay, great, congratulations. Thank you. So we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Fort-- no, he's not here. Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Dressel.
Here.
Mr. Kang.
Here.
Mr. Hines.
Here.
Mr. Cornavale.
Here.
Mayor Coth.
Here.
Mrs. Scalcione.
Here.
Mr. Darian.
Here.
Mr. Flegging.
Here.
We have no swearing in of new members, so we'll proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we need to reorganize the planning board. And we need a nomination for chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ed Flegging as chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against?
We need a nomination for vice chairman. I'll nominate Greg Darian.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Nomination for secretary. Who was the prior secretary?
Sure.
I'd like to nominate Vince Scalcione.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Okay, appointment of the council.
I make a motion to nominate Brian Giblin of Giblin &amp; Giblin.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
I need a nomination for the appointment of engineer.
You guys are sitting in the wrong seats.
I thought that was done on purpose.
Didn't even look. Now that it's straightened out, I'd like to nominate David Atkinson.
Better pay.
Negligee Engineering Associates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Appointment of the recording secretary. I don't know, do we have to nominate Gabrielle Forenza?
Oh, you got planner, chairman.
Oh, I missed planner? Oh, I'm sorry, appointment of the planner. So I need a nomination for the planner.
I nominate we hire Caroline Ryder.
A second.
T and M.
Uh, T and M, is that him? Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Sorry, Caroline, I skipped over you. Okay, nomination for the recording secretary. I'll nominate Gabrielle Forenza.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
I think that's it, appointment of committee members, we did. All right, so we'll move on right to the agenda then, subdivision, site drainage, and soil moving.
Excuse me, chairman, we got the committee members. You know, subcommittees.
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry. Okay, so I need a nomination for subdivision, site drainage, and soil moving. That was Councilman Cornavale last year, so I would be happy to nominate him.
Second.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Are we just doing chairmans? That's kind of what we did last year and then...
Building, I need a nomination for a Chair of Business, Building and Signage. Min.
After that.
Wonderful, I'll nominate you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Regional Planning Coordination. I'll nominate Mayor Coth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Zoning.
Nominate Chairman Flegging.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
And then finally, Master Plan, Open Space, Environmental, and Circulation Systems. I'll nominate Greg Darian as Chairperson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
I'm sorry, one more, historical preservation. I'd like to nominate Councilman Cornavale.
Unless anyone else would like to take that? I'm happy to do it, but I don't want to. Okay, Mike, thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Okay, I think that's it.
That's it.
All right, great, thank you, everyone. Next order of business is to approve the planning board minutes from November 4th and December 3rd, 2024.
Do you want to do them individually or together, Mr. Chairman?
Any comments on either of them? All right, I'll take a motion to approve both.
So moved?
Roll call.
Second.
Second.
Who's second?
The mayor.
Mayor. Okay, all four?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Okay, so we'll go into committee reports. Subdivision, Site Drainage, and Soil Moving.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, for the record, state that calendar number 158-24, subdivision Murphy 798 East Drive is going to be carried over to the February meeting. So we will now start with cal--.
Excuse me, without need to renotice?
Without need to renotice, thank you, Steve. So we're going to start with calendar number S-134-25, Soil Moving Rodriguez 472 Grove Street. I'd ask the applicants to come on up.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, it's going to seem like a cop-out, but I'm going to recuse myself from this one since I'm immediately behind this applicant.
Okay, understandable.
Yes, and you can pull up another chair, too. And who will be presenting on behalf of the applicant?
I'm the homeowner.
He's the homeowner, I'm the contractor.
Okay. Mike, does anybody need to be sworn in?
Yeah, so are you going to both testify or just one of you?
I can go for it, I'm the homeowner.
Okay, and if we need other testimony, we'll swear you, okay? So state your name and address for the record, please.
That speaker, that speaker right on top of that box.
Oh, should be good, okay. My name is Timothy Rodriguez, I bought the home at 472--
Address?
485 Maple Avenue, TNX, New Jersey. Have not yet changed my address.
Okay, you swear that the testimony you're going to give this evening is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Correct.
Okay, proceed.
You could just give an overview of the project?
Sure. So we're renovating the house generally, updating electrical and plumbing. One of the things that we're trying to do, which is the main thing here, is we're adding an addition to the back of the home. And for the foundation and for the basement that's being dug out under that addition, there was a soil application for the movement. That was roughly calculated to be 191 cubic feet of soil. And my contractor let me know that the mason had specified that it'll probably be about 160 is actually going to be removed because there's fillback after we dig everything out, but 191 will be moved.
So we'll start with our professionals. If they have any questions or comments, Dave, we'll start with you, based on your letter of December 2nd.
Sure, thank you. Just a couple of quick questions for you. So as far as the application before us, as far as impervious coverage on the property, is there an increase or decrease?
It's a decrease.
So there'll be a decrease by the work that you're doing?
Yeah.
So as such, just so the board's aware, because there's a decrease in impervious coverage, there's no requirement for additional stormwater measures on the property, so as situated, they satisfy that requirement. As far as your proposed improvements, do you propose to change any of the grading and/or existing drainage patterns to the property?
No.
So everything will remain as is?
Yes.
So there'll be no impact to the neighboring properties as a result of the work?
No, that's correct.
Okay. How about trees to be removed?
No, no trees to be removed.
Those are the main questions I have related to the application. I mean, this is one of those applications where we've talked about it in the past where it's really kind of a formality, based on the total cubic yards. So just something to think as the year progresses, you know, looking to make recommendations to the governing body to potentially, the volume.
Steve, any questions?
No.
Okay. And Caroline, I know you didn't do a report, but any questions?
Nothing.
Mike, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Any questions from the members of the board?
Just a double clarification. So there's no variances to this application, it's just soil moving because of the size of the soil? And it's most likely under what we were considering a threshold, based on the last evaluation of this, so I have no other questions.
Yeah, I mean, based on our notes, I think we had 204 cubic yards, the threshold to come to the planning board is 100 cubic yards.
Right.
I think the number we've looked at was somewhere around 400 for potential futures.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve calendar number S-134-25, Soil Moving Application Rodriguez 472 Grove Street. A second. Oh, wait, I apologize before. Does anybody from the public wish to comment or speak on this application? My bad. All right, hearing none, I will close it to the public, and my motion stands.
Mr. Wu, I'll second.
Roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Good luck with the project.
Thanks so much.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, our next application is a carryover from last month, calendar number S-159-24, Site Plan Variance Relief Royal Wine and Spirits 90 Kinderkamak Road.
Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself since I'm, my residence is directly behind them.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, what I thought we would do is, as you know, we suspended the application hearing sort of in mid-flight last time, so, Counselor, if you're okay, I'd like to just pick it up where we left off and allow the public to continue to ask questions of the architect, if the architect's available.
Sure. Counselor, no problem at all. Mr. Saravich, please.
Appreciate it, thank you. So if anybody from the--
Mr. Chairman, I was going to introduce myself.
My apologies, Mr. Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council. My name is Colin Quinn, I am attorney for the applicant, Royal Wines. All three are the partner and owners of the property and of the proposed business are here this evening. I have also with us our professionals, including our architect, Joseph Sarr, who testified last month. I also have here this evening Mr. Page, Phil Page, an engineer and a planner, and our principal, Amrit Singh, will also testify. So in response to Councilman Carnaval's request, I submit to Joe Sarr, who's been previously sworn and has already been accepted by the board as an expert, for any question the public may have. I just also may add that I think it was last week, Ms. Ryder had requested an updated, revised architectural plan from Mr. Sarr, which has been provided to the building department by PDF that shows and reflects the second address on the first floor, which I think can speak to at length. Counselor, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And then, if I may ask, Mr. Quinn, after the architect, how many more experts will be testifying?
Just the planner, Mr. Page, and then my client will testify.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Would anybody from the public like to ask any questions of the architect?
Excuse me? Mr. Chairman, before we get to that point, I just want to clarify the comment that council made about the plans, just for, so that the record's clear. It wasn't that I was requesting a plan revision, it was that I was actually attempting to locate the revision that was on the plans, because there was a revised sheet submitted to our office without an explanation, and my notes had indicated that there would be a door added, so the problem was it wasn't showing on the elevation. So after a couple of discussions with the architect's office, I think that there was a recognition that the plan needed a slight modification. So I think that is what happened. It wasn't so much that I asked them to modify the plans, as that I was trying to get some clarification so that our review could be clear.
So the door got in?
I believe, yes, the door got in.
Last meeting on the plan, you wanted to see it on the elevation.
Right, it wasn't, it was a little confusing because it didn't show on the elevation, so just for clarification.
Thank you for that clarity, Ms. Ryder.
Yeah, and I just want to make a statement about public comment in that it needs to be relevant to the project, to the application, needs to be professional, and for the betterment of Oradell, because last meeting, there was some derogatory comments made about me and the board in general, and we're not going to tolerate that. So just keep that in mind, please, thank you.
Mr. Quinn, would you mind handing the microphone to Mr. Sarr?
Certainly. Sarr?
Happy New Year. Paul Latunis, 50 Beverly Road. We left off last time. My question to you is, could you build and complete this building if you were not able to gain a variance on the single-family border buffer area of 15 feet that was put in the master plan to protect single-family residences from commercial developments and businesses?
That's a good question.
Counselor, just before you answer, can we break it down for benefit of the public, benefit of the board members, and ask just direct singular rather compound questions so that the architect can lay a foundation, evidence for the record?
Sure, yeah, so if you could just, that's, if you could just sort of take the question one concept at a time, so that the architect can answer. Thank you.
Okay, well, could you build and complete this building if you were not able to gain a variance?
I would have to go back to my client and see what their requirements are. They're our building is building to increase their current situation, they're moving out of their current situation right down the street, and this is the size that they're requiring to have a successful business.
Okay, could you, if you did this, could you eliminate the variance and add, because you're going to change the footprint of the building in order to do this, so would you add 1 foot 9 inches to the north and still have a 25-foot turn area, which would be okay for the parking lot?
That would be a better question for the site engineer.
Yeah, some of these questions are engineering, I'm going to have to object to them. We do have the planner here to testify, relevant to the variances themselves. I'd like to have a clear record in front of this board and for the benefit of the public before we start attacking with minutia and hypotheticals that are not relevant. And per the chairman's questioning before, or his statement, I think we need that testimony before we can, we go off the boards here with some hypothetical questioning.
Okay, I'm going to break it down then.
Direct the questioner to the actual facts.
I'll break it down even more.
If I may finish for the record, sir, if we can break the questions down so they're factually based on evidence and a record that this witness testified to, that's perfectly fine. But if we're going to go off into hypotheticals, then I think we're off board of what a factually based hearing needs to be, and I would respectfully request that this questioner be directed otherwise, or I'd be allowed to put my testimony in, and we question based on the testimony.
Okay, how important is it to have that 1-foot variance?
That's referring to site engineering, and that would be best answered by the site engineer or planner.
So as an architect, you, you're not going to answer whether you would--
Those variances are directed for site engineering and planning.
Well, what about the building footprint? If the building footprint is less than what it is?
Can we get a question?
No, I'm not really understanding that that's a question. Could you state, if you're going to state a question, excuse me, please, just state a question. That was a statement.
Can you change the footprint of the building by 1 foot 9 inches to the north?
The building footprint falls within all the setbacks for the building itself.
Okay, I'll move on. Can you add a front entrance in addition to the parking lot side entrance?
Mr. Chairman, are we allowed to put our case in first, before we start asking whether we can do something different than what we proposed to do? I think we are entitled to that, as our prima facie case in front of this board, before we, someone asks us to make hypothetical changes that the testimony hasn't been put in yet.
Yeah, I don't think we've heard all the testimony. Is that correct?
That's correct, Judge.
Judge?
I'm sorry, yes.
Not for motion.
That's where I was all day.
So the planner and engineer will still be testifying, which might help you understand more about the project, and you would still have an opportunity to ask questions.
Okay. Why is it that you don't, why is it that you don't have windows on the west elevation to break up the brick wall warehouse look?
Objection. This is a land use hearing, this is an evidentiary hearing.
This is an architect, sir. The architect designed the building. The building, he designed the building, and he has reasons why he designed it that way, for aesthetics or for form and function. So I think that the architect should be able to answer this.
I respectfully disagree. This is land use.
Yeah, Paul, the building was designed, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman, I'll wait for you to finish.
The building was designed, and unless you have any more pertinent questions--
They're all pertinent, they're all pertinent, sir.
Aside from the way the building is designed, or the windows, or the color, we have to move on, Paul.
Well, these are very important things to the community that I'm talking about, it's because we have to see that building every day, when we walk down the street, or when we drive by, and really, I would like to have the building--
Making a comment.
Be more aesthetically pleasing.
This is their application, and they're presenting what they want to propose to the board.
That's right.
Okay.
All right, Paul, wrap it up.
I wrapped it up. It seems that we cannot improve on the building, sir, but this is it, and I don't think it should pass this way.
Can I? Yeah, go ahead. You know, when we have questions from the public, they're not building professionals, and so perhaps to Paul's assistance, is there an opportunity he's going to have to ask a question with respect to the design?
Is that a question for me, Mr. Dressel?
Question for my board, you, our attorney.
I'll defer to whoever's first. Thank you, Mr. Dressel. Just, if I may say, for the record, last month, the opportunity was presented, and this applicant was requested to stop its testimony, and the planning board's regulations per Councilman Carnaval is to allow the prima facie case and all four witnesses testify. We respectfully permitted the public to present their questions for over an hour, and it was very informed, very helpful, and very productive. We now came here a month later, ready to present our expert witness and our client to testify, would like the opportunity to do so, and when they're finished, again, the public will be given an opportunity to ask their questions at that time.
I appreciate the clarification, so I guess I'm going to ask again, will he be able to question the architect on the aesthetics that he's concerned about with respect to the street view?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on, and just for the public's knowledge, we're going to go through the next two experts who will testify. two experts who will testify, the planner and the owner, and then we will open it up to the public for further questions. So.
I want the rest of the people questioned in. Anybody else?
At this juncture, what I'd like to see happen is for you to complete your application, bring your witnesses in, and then the public can ask questions of any people who testify tonight. They'll have to remain after their testimony is concluded. This way, we have a clean record as to what's going on, otherwise it's going to be quite disjointed. So if you want to just continue with the application, then whoever has a question, feel free, they could ask as they deem appropriate. And if there's a question that's objectionable, we'll take them on a question-by-question basis.
Thank you, counsel. Makes complete sense to me. Your excuse is sitting in the back. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call Mr. William Page, who is our engineer slash planner, who will be testifying this evening. Mr. Page?
Sit down. Can you swear?
Mr. Page, you swear the testimony you're going to give this evening is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Your full name for the record?
It's William Page, P-A-G-E.
And you're testifying in your capacity as an engineer, is that correct?
And a planner.
And a planner. Have you testified before this board before?
A while ago, mostly. I've been in front of the Board of Adjustment.
Okay. Just very briefly, do you want to give us the benefit of your experience since you may have not testified before these folks that are here tonight?
Sure. I have a bachelor's degree in planning from the State University of New York, and I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from NJIT. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, several other states, licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, I'm a licensed land surveyor in several states, and a certified municipal engineer. The projects, actually, I had my own engineering company for about 37 years, and I've, some of the projects that I've been involved in, it's been the Garden State Plaza for 30 years, and numerous shopping centers, retail buildings, residential developments, and quite a few civil engineering and planning related projects.
See the reaction you got?
I see that. Bless him.
Does the board have any objection to hearing the testimony of Engineer Page in his capacity as an expert planner and engineer?
I have no objection.
Mr. Quinn, please proceed.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Page, have you testified before the Oradel zoning board recently?
Yes, I have.
And have you testified before this board before?
Quite a while ago, yes.
Okay. You're testifying tonight initially as the planner for this application?
That is correct.
All right. And you will be giving us a description of the various and assorted variances and approvals which this applicant is seeking, is that a fact, sir?
That is true.
Okay. If you would, please, for the benefit of the board and the public, can you please describe just specifically and one by one what exactly the variances and approvals that this applicant is seeking from this board?
The variances that we have with this application in front of the board is the property width, it's a pre-existing nonconformity, 140 feet is what the width is, and 150 feet is what's required per the ordinance. On-site parking, we provide eight parking spaces where, based on the calculations again for the ordinance, 17 parking spaces are required.
And what is that calculation for the ordinance, sir?
It's two, one space is equal to 250 square feet of the retail space.
Okay, please continue.
The side parking is not permitted in the front yard or the side yard, but again, because of the shape of this particular lot, and again, I want to mention, as Mr. Quinn mentioned earlier, the building that is being proposed is totally conforming to the site plan application or the ordinance for Oradell. So we do have parking in the front yard and in the side yard. Well, actually, the side yard, mostly. We have no parking in the rear yard. The buffer, there is a question that on the east side of the property, which is adjacent to the residential zone, that a variance requires that the trees that are being planted should be in a zigzag shape. Again, because of the topography, and we also want to try and maintain a lot of the larger existing trees, we don't want to chop them down and zigzag proposed trees and try and plant trees within the space that is somewhat vacant. Along the north side, we have a buffer of approximately 7 feet, 6.9 feet. The ordinance requires a buffer of 10 feet, so we're short there also. The landscape screening, we are proposing a solid, continuous, double-sided fence, white solid vinyl fence around the east side of the property and along the north side of the property. And then the last variance, which was presented at the last hearing by the engineer, is the lighting illumination. And we did have a couple of locations where the illumination was 0.2-foot candles over the property. And per the ordinance, that's the maximum spillage. And my understanding is that the engineer did say that we will comply with that ordinance. And I believe what a lot of towns do also is that the town engineer or the building department has a six-month look, that if they do not see that the lighting or illumination is adequate for its general purpose, that they can make recommendations, and the applicant must make recommendations to make the lighting conform.
I think Mr. Atkinson put that in his comment letter that he would require, that would be acceptable to this applicant, would it not, Mr. Page?
Yes, it would.
Okay. So with respect to the two final ordinance variances that were in the initial application, namely the lighting and relevant to the continuous screen, those are now will comply and are off the table as variances, sir?
That is correct.
Okay. Were you here last month for Mrs. Osterkorn's testimony on the hearing aspect of this application, sir?
Yes.
Okay. And at that time, did she fully provide detailed engineering information relevant to the application, water retention, site plan, circulation, and other comments relevant to Mr. Atkinson's letter?
Yes, she did.
And at that time, sir, did, was there testimony relevant to the buffer and the screen that's being presented by this applicant in order to benefit the public, benefit the adjoining neighbors in the single-family residential neighborhood to the east and to the multifamily residential residents to the north?
Yes. And basically, in reference to that question, there was a concern initially with the site plan that our drive aisle was like 31, 32 feet. And based on the comments that were received by the, to the engineer during that hearing is that that was reduced to 24 feet.
Wasn't that also in Mr. Atkinson's report, Mr. Page?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Did we in fact reduce the drive aisle to accommodate the northbound buffer zone?
Yes. And that's why we do have the 7-foot depth, where before it was basically about 2 to 3 feet. So we did comply with that request.
Okay. So what remains then is, since there'll be compliance with the landscape screen and the lighting, is the deficiency in the breadth of the buffer on the north side, it's 3 feet less than the ordinance requirement, sir?
Yes, that is correct.
And the zigzagging in the buffering in the rear or east side of the property, speaking of the zigzagging of the plants, of the trees?
That is correct.
Okay. And you had testified that these other two ordinances were pre-existing nonconforming?
Yes.
So does that leave us, sir, with the most substantive ordinance variance being sought here, the parking variance?
That is the most substantive.
And is that the subject of the testimony you're about to bring this evening, sir?
Yes, it is.
And have you created a parking study, Mr. Page, relevant to that parking testimony, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And can you please describe for the benefit of the board and the public exactly what the identity of that report is? Counsel, I would like to have that marked. I believe we're up to A6.
Yes. Was a copy of the report submitted to the board?
Yes, it was. It was part of our original application, and it's been identified. If you could just identify the name of the report and the date of the report, sir?
The name of the port, report is a parking study, 85 Kendrick Mac Road, Oradell, New Jersey. And the date of is May 2, 2024.
Did you author this report, Mr. Page?
Yes, I did.
Did you prepare the data relevant to it, sir?
Yes, I did.
And can you please describe for the benefit of the board and the public exactly what you did to compile this data for this report?
What we, what I did is several days during a period of about 2 to 3 weeks, we'd go to the site, count all the cars that were either parked on Kendrick Mac Road in front of the existing site. This is everything in reference to the existing site. And we would count the number of cars that were also within the site's parking lot. The good reason here is that this is the same use, the same store that's already at the location at the upper, you know, the southern end of the site, the property, is moving down to this new location. So in that sense, counting the cars and stuff, or the demand that is at that site, gives the board a very good representation of what the demand is going to be at the new site as well. And one of the issues is a parking deficiency from the ordinance. So the maximum time that we counted cars was 12 cars on a Saturday and a Thursday between 6:00 and 7:00 PM. At that particular point, there would be no, the stores that were also adjacent to the new location, which is the acupuncturist, the specialty store, because it's the England, Back to England or something, and the salon. Those two stores also have parking in the back of their site. But I did count the number of parking stalls that are on Kendrick Mac Road in front of our proposed location. And directly in front of the store is three parking spaces. And there's another space that is further south. So we have the eight parking spaces that we're proposing for this application. We have the three parking spaces that are on Kendrick Mac Road, which gives us 11 parking spaces. Again, the maximum number of parking spaces that I counted after, say, 6 o'clock, was 12, and that was during an hour. And also during that same time, we counted nine cars on Kendrick Mac Road in front of that store.
Just let me stop you right there, Mr. Page. Just before you conducted your study, did you have an opportunity to speak to the owner of Royal Wines?
Yes, I did.
And he's in fact here tonight, sir, is that correct?
That is correct.
And did you discuss with him his business model and when his peak sessions or peak times for customers to come into his store?
Yes.
Did he also describe to you what the traffic was coming into the, the foot traffic was coming into the store as well, sir?
Yes.
Okay. And you've read Ms. Reiter's report, correct?
Yes.
So she was interested in knowing about what business model was used as the basis for your parking study? And what did you use? And what similarities did you rely upon in making the assessments and the assumptions that you did in this parking study? Would you please describe for this board what information you ascertained from the client that you used as a basis for the study, and what assumptions you made?
According to the client, again, I want to stress that, again, it's the same store that's moving north on Kendrick Mac Road than what you have now. So whatever business and the way he's running his business now is going to be consistent to what it is in this new location. He was saying that the time spent for a typical client coming into the store would be a maximum of maybe 5 minutes, but it would be a lot less. He said the way he has his cash register set up is right by the front door. So if someone comes in and you can ask them, is there something specially that you're looking for? And then what he can do is then get that or direct them in the right location. He said typically, it's maybe 1 to 2 minutes is what someone would spend in the store because most likely they know what they're looking for, they've been there before, so they know where to go. And he was saying that, again, the most cars he would have in his lot would be 1 or 2 cars. And he gets to the site at 10 o'clock in the morning, every morning, from 10 to 2:30. And then he leaves the store and goes to another location. He says he has one employee in the store, and the employee parks either during the busy time. It'd be at the municipal lot, which is south of this particular location. He has another employee, which would come in later on weekends when it's the busiest time, and be more in the evening, and that would be 2 people. And he would not be there at that point, so again, it's just 2 employees. And the other employee, he said, takes the bus. So none of the employee cars, which is 1, would be onsite. So all 8 spaces would be available onsite, and 3 spaces would be available on Kendrick Mac Road. So I guess my point there is that based on the study of the existing location and based on, you know, liquor store of this style, also comparing it to Quark and Cag and Emerson, that we have more than enough parking spaces available.
Thank you, Mr. Page. In doing your report, I note that you reviewed the ITE generation manual. Can you describe for the benefit of the board exactly what that manual does and how that informed your report?
Well, the ITE trip generation manual is like a gospel that traffic engineers would use if they don't have a source of something similar to what they're designing. So if someone goes in and designs a bank, and they don't have another bank that's similar to the one that's being proposed, then you'd use ITE, which stands for the Institute of Transportation Engineers Manual.
But in this case, you did in fact have a model, a real base model in Oradell that you relied upon, is that correct?
Yes, and that would be more accurate than what ITE would come up with because, again, they would be based on numerous samples of liquor stores of all different sizes. And most likely, this would be small compared to most liquor stores like Total Wine and Moore and several other than, you know, other liquor stores that may be around this area.
Have you, Mr. Page, had the opportunity to review the interior layout plan that Mr. Sauer testified to last month?
Yes.
And can you tell the board some of the features of that interior layout design that lends itself to a quick turnaround for a shopper?
Well, again, a lot of people that go to liquor stores, they're repeat customers. And again, you have the aisles where the wines, the beers, the alcohol, and everything else would be the liquor. And the way it's set up is that when you go into the store, you would have signage that would say where the wines are, certain type wines, whether they're domestic, whether they're foreign, or whatever. And again, the whole idea is that he would be at the front door as someone would come in. He would ask, are you looking for something specific? And then he would direct them or show them where to go.
Okay. And is the location of each of those things for ready and quick turnaround and use, is that, is that what the features are on the interior layout, sir?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Just, and I may have missed this, and forgive me if I have, the typical trip generation for your typical shopper is, what is their time period they spend from parking to being in the store and pulling out?
For this particular location, it would be, I would say, 2 to 3 minutes, maybe 5. If someone was really puzzled and didn't know what they wanted to do, then maybe 8 minutes.
So to extrapolate that out, Mr. Page, over the course of an hour, how many times would a party be able to use a parking space?
Well, even if you look at what I have here, the 12, 12 people would be parking onsite within an hour. That would basically be if 1 car came every 1 minute, and it was a 5-minute stay, then that would be what it would be. But typically, in traffic and transportation, 25% of a number is, was generated during the peak periods. And also, in this particular occasion, you may have 2 cars, maybe 3 max, at any one time. And then you'd have a lull of nobody, and then you'd have a few more cars. So I would say the maximum number of cars you could see at 1 particular instant would be 3, maybe 4, and that's it.
And that's during the peak time period for the Royal Wine Spirits Store?
That is correct.
3 or 4 at a time?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Page. In reviewing your report, is there any other relevant or salient facts and data that you wish to identify for the board's benefit?
No. I mean, in a, the ideal situation here is that we did take an existing facility, and this existing facility is locating itself from where it's presently at, approximately 400 north of its present location. So you can say that how they runs this business, the generation of traffic or parking or clients that go to the store would be similar to what is going to happen at this location. You know, ideally, he's hoping to have a few more people, but again, even if that's 2 or 3 more cars in the parking lot, this can certainly handle it.
Are there any? I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then the peak is at between 6:00 and 7:00 on Saturday, and it just happened to be on this 1 Thursday night. And the, again, breaking that down, 12 in an hour, that's not, again, a lot of cars over a period of 1 hour. So again, my expert opinion is that the parking lot and what's being proposed will adequately handle what's being generated.
Just one housekeeping question, Mr. Page. I think I saw in one of the comment letters, one of the professionals wanted to know whether there would be any assigned spaces other than the handicap space. It's been a dotified on the safety.
Right. Just the handicap space would be the only assigned space.
And are the 3 spaces that are out front, are they directly in front of the frontage of the building, the property where the applicant has purchased that property?
The proposed.
Proposed.
Yeah, they're just set back from the front of the building.
So they're in front of the frontage owned by the applicant, correct?
Yes.
And how far are they away from, how far are those spaces away from the front door of the proposed building?
From the 2 parallel parking spaces.
Correct, 3.
Here, probably the sidewalk and the right-of-way, 10 feet, 15 feet.
Okay. All right, Mr. Page, we're going to move on past your... All right, Mr. Page, we're going to move on past your parking testimony, sir, unless you have something else you wish to add to your conclusion. I do want to return to the variances that you identified earlier, sir. And again, continuing with your planning analysis.
Sure, the first variance that we have are C-one variances.
And can you please describe for the board exactly what a C-one variance, and be specific, sir, because I think we have two types of C-one variances here. So I want you to be clear for the record.
The first C-one variance that we have is by reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of the property. In this particular case, the length of the property is a hundred and forty feet, where a hundred and fifty feet is required, you know, by ordinance. The width is a hundred and two feet and, on the north side, and a hundred and seven feet on the south side.
In your estimation and professional expertise, do you consider these two factors to be definitive of narrowness or shallowness of the property under the statute?
They fall into a concern, because again, here in the B-three zone, commercial and retail uses are permitted. And since we're moving a tenant south of this location to the north side where this site is, and based on the square footage of what this particular applicant would like to construct to make it worthwhile for a liquor store, this site is rather narrow. See, the whole idea is that, the idea is that you would have a retail building along Kendrick Mac Road in the B-three zone with parking in the back. And because of the depth of this property, you don't have that room.
Is it in fact too narrow to abide by the Oradel zoning ordinance requirement of all parking to be behind the rear building wall?
If you wanted to make a small building, if you look at the buildings that are adjacent to it, they're rather narrow.
Is it too narrow?
It's too narrow for any other use other than a small retail establishment like the acupuncturist, or the salon, or the English store.
So for other permitted uses, such as the applicant's permitted use, it would be impossible to construct a requisite building that's necessary for that use?
Yes.
And abide by the parking requirement of parking behind the building wall?
That is correct. And if you recollect, the Hubcap Joe's property has been vacant for a while. And part of it is for someone to come in and develop that particular property, again, you would want something that would be viable.
Okay, so you've identified, Mr. Page, that the deficiency in the length, the nonconforming, and the width of the property, qualify this as a C-one variance? Is that your testimony?
Yes, it is.
Is it C-one A? Okay. And what other physical features affect this specific property that qualify it for a C-one variance?
Sure. And as we mentioned, the depth of the property or the width is a hundred and two feet and a hundred and seven feet. The other thing we have to remember, based on the site plan that the engineer presented, along the back property by the residential zone, the property drops off considerably. So maybe you may have a hundred and seven feet in width or depth. You don't have that usable, because it's like a six to nine percent drop in topography at the back.
Please define that, because I understand it's a hundred and one feet in the middle of the property, and it, to use your term, drops or descends?
Descends.
The topography descends down to ninety-two. Is that what occurs in the rear of the property, sir?
Yes, it's about a nine-foot drop.
Nine foot, or a nine percent drop in the topography?
Well, from one oh one to ninety-two feet, that is about nine.
Okay. Do you consider that a considerable obstruction to development of that property as a result of that topographical change?
Well, if a developer wanted to make the property level so that he could put parking in the back, let's just say, or do some other smaller building than what's being proposed, he would have to build a nine-foot-high retaining wall.
So are you saying that it's financially impracticable or impracticable from a construction standpoint? Because of the topography, it makes it difficult or creates a hardship for this particular applicant?
I would say it would.
Okay, and is it the property itself that creates the hardship?
Yes.
Not the fact that he's got to build a retaining wall?
No, it's the property itself.
And you're speaking about the topography itself, is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
That's causing the hardship? Okay. All right, so that's a C-one-two variance to your estimation, Mr. Page?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we've identified the property width as a C-one variance, the side and front yard we haven't discussed yet. So can you please identify what kind of variance that would be?
Along the side yard, especially on the north side, we have seven feet is what our setback is from the building to the curb, you know, the property line to our curb line. And again, ten feet is what's required by ordinance. And there is a statement that if you cannot comply with that, then we can put in some other feature that would, just say, block lighting, you know, provide aesthetics, sound, and other detrimental features that may impact the adjacent properties. So again, what we're doing here is we're putting up a six-foot-high solid white vinyl fence, you know, again, which would be on our property, but it would be closer to the, I guess, the apartment building on the north side.
The condominiums to the north.
Yes. And again, we feel that is a good buffering between our parking lot and the building.
Would you identify the additional buffering that's on the applicant's side of the fence that's proposed?
We also are providing arborvitae. We're providing six-foot-high arborvitae, which can get to be like eight, nine, ten feet high. And those, we'll try and put them in his exact pattern, but again, it's all based on the depth of what we can plant the shrubs. The biggest thing we have to be concerned with is if we do park cars along the curb line and the engine portion extends over the curb, the heat sometimes could kill the vegetation on that side. But again, anything that we plant would be outside that distance and closer to the fence. So all care will be made that the plants are going to survive. And if they don't, then they would be replaced by the applicant.
Okay. Relevant to the, the rear yard parking requirement, and you had testified regarding the topography and the narrowness of the property, does that impact the ability to comply with the rear yard? The rear yard parking requirement, sir?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Would that qualify as a C-one variance then as well, Mr. Page?
That would be a C-one and possibly a C-two.
Okay. Let's, let's talk about the C-two, because what's left to talk about with the C-two? Would it be the onsite parking?
Yes.
All right, sir, how would, would you please describe for the benefit of the board, what is a C-two variance, and what's, what's the basis for it?
Well, in this particular case, a C-two variance is that the ordinance says that we should provide seventeen parking spaces. And we have eight parking spaces onsite. And then hopefully, what I rhetoric earlier during this presentation is that we don't need the seventeen parking spaces. That based on what is there in their present use and what's being proposed in the new use, we are providing more spaces than what's there now. And at the peak demand, we have the eight spaces and the three spaces, possibly four spaces on Kendrick Mac Road. So again, even though it's a variance, because we don't comply with the ordinance, we feel that the board should look at the, say, the reality of the situation and grant that variance.
Well, isn't it a fact, Mr. Page, that for a C-two variance to be heard or considered by the board, that you have to seek to achieve a municipal land use goal?
Yes.
Okay. So the applicant's seeking to put in eight parking spaces instead of seventeen, correct, sir?
Right.
So what municipal land use goals do you anticipate as the planner for this application this applicant is satisfying by presenting this particular application in this site plan?
Okay, what we're presenting is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Again, what we're proposing is, I feel that the parking that is being proposed is safe for the general public. We are also providing the buffers along the north side and the east side, which will provide health and general welfare also to the general public.
Does that also create a desirable visual environment?
Yes.
For the community, for passersby, for residents in the neighborhood?
Yeah, because part of it also is to provide adequate light, air, and open space, and to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement.
Okay, so let's go to, look at this application and describe how it satisfies those particular goals. How does this particular application satisfy good civic design to your mind?
What you have is a empty lot with a small building on it. And I'm sure anyone who drives by that site will say, what's going to happen to this property? You know? And then Hubcap Joe, you say to yourself, how does he make a living on that small building and that big piece of property? So the architect in this particular case, in my opinion, did present a nice aesthetically designed building for this location. It's brick, and that's one of the things that Oradel kind of likes to see aesthetically within the downtown area.
Is that based upon your previous testimony before boards in Oradel that you've reached that conclusion, sir?
Yes, and one of the questions that comes up is when an architect designs something is, like, just as a reference, I'll bring it up as aura. Initially, when we went through the first group of hearings, they said, why don't you make it out of brick, like the Borough Hall, like the library and all the other buildings, you know, within that location? And the architect made the comment, he said, that this particular location, we have wood structures. You know, you have the houses on that side. So he felt that aesthetically, that would be a nicer look to that particular building instead of that brick building. In this particular occasion, you don't have stick buildings on either side of what's being proposed. You have stucco masonry. And so in that sense, this, in my opinion, this building aesthetically would look nice in that particular location. If you look at just the architectural plan, maybe it looks like it's dominant, because you're just seeing it by itself. You don't see the other buildings on both sides. But the building does conform to all the bulk requirements of the Borough of Oradel. So in that sense, we are compliant, and it's a permitted use for that particular location in the B-three zone.
The chairman expressed an interest last month in knowing whether footprint was exactly located in the public building. And can you describe for his benefit, my benefit, everyone else's benefit, exactly how this design of this particular building, where it's situated, why it's situated, and for what purpose?
The location of the building is set so it's on the south side of the lot. The whole idea that is for, as they say, wayfinding. If someone is coming north on Kendrick Mac Road, you see the building, and then you can pull into the parking lot. And that would be the best way for people heading north, because you have the other buildings that you're going to be passing before you get to this location. If you had the driveway on the south side of the building, people may miss the driveway because you have the building right next door that kind of blocks your view. And I don't believe we're proposing a pylon sign or anything like that out front. So wayfinding why is the way the building is located is the best location. Heading south on Kendrick Mac Road, you're kind of coming up the hill from the curve on New Milford Avenue, and so, or the main street. And then you're going to see the building, and you see the building, and then you can pull into the parking lot, because you can see it, that's where you pull in before the building. So the location is set for wayfinding and customer location as to where I'm going to park, and I see this building.
From a planning standpoint, Mr. Page, does moving the location of the building envelope to that southern boundary, almost adjacent to the other cluster of business buildings, does that reflect a good design? Does that show a healthy respect in the design for the surrounding residential neighbors?
Yes, it does.
Can you please describe how that does so, sir?
Well, what you have is you have a group of buildings from Argyle Street heading north. And so our building is along that, within that cluster. We're not right adjacent to those buildings, because we have our side yard setback. But to me, what it's doing is creating a cluster of the buildings, which again, the ordinance kind of recommends to see is, if you have development, you want to continue this particular development or use. And so in that sense, that's why I think this is the ideal location for the building.
So is the now northern side of the building where the buffer zones are, right, and the fencing, and the trees, and the plantings, and the parking lot, is that a quieter area of the proposed location?
Well, that is where you have the townhouses.
So I mean, on the property of the applicant's.
Yes, it's a quieter side.
And how so?
Because again, we have the fence that we're buffering between the townhouse and the parking lot. So that's going to buffer any noise from cars. It's also going to buffer the headlights, so no headlight glare is going into the townhouse project. We're under existing condition with Hubcap Joe, he didn't have a buffer. So they would be getting headlights if people did pull into the four parking spaces on the north side of the lot. And then we are providing the arborvitae. So between the arborvitae and the fence, to me, that's more than adequate of a buffering between the townhouse, where it's residential, and our parking area.
So based on your testimony, is it your opinion that this particular project satisfies those elements of the municipal land use law that Oradel has adopted and embraces as well?
Yes, it does.
So under, as a C-two variance, the application embraces those land use goals. What else does it have to satisfy in order to be considered by this board? Isn't there a weighing that has to take place, Mr. Page?
Well, the next phase is any negative that we're proposing. And the benefits of a deviation from the ordinance substantially outweighs any detriment. Those are one of the negative criterias.
Can you explain how so, sir?
In this particular case, I do not see any negatives. We're, as you had just mentioned, we're clustering our business, our buildings, you know, from the retail establishments to the south of what's being proposed. We're keeping our building in the same alignment of what's there now, so it's not creating a void. It's also going to be the gateway to the downtown of the central business district. Again, it's a building that has been there now, is occupied, and again, we're just moving it from its present location north to a new location in a much nicer building. Provides a permanent retail use to the community, and enhances the B-three zone, you know, with regard to the residence and the townhouse, because again, we're designed in such a way that we're not going to be impacting or encroaching upon them.
So in your estimation, is it, it doesn't affect the public good or the public community, this particular application, does it?
No, it doesn't.
All right, we're relevant to the zone ordinance, zoning ordinance, and the zone plan of the Borough of Oradel. How is, how, if at all, is it impacted by this application?
Again, with the zoning ordinance and the master plan for the Borough of Oradel, again, we've assemblage of small properties to foster efficient use of land. That's part of the master plan. Again, this is a small piece of property, and we're utilizing the property. Again, the building is conforming. Everything within the building meets the requirements or the bulk requirements of the B-three zone. We're reinforcing the district's prevailing development character.
Which is what in a B-three?
Commercial or retail use. And again, we're compliant, I feel, with the three uses that are just south of this particular location. And we're elimination of incompatible land uses. Again, if you put a smaller building on this particular lot, I do not see how, number one, that would occur, and I don't see how it would be successful.
Is an empty lot an incompatible land use for this particular zone in the Borough of Oradel?
Yes, it is. I mean, we also have the old Subaru lot further down the road, and maybe I'm getting off track, but that's been vacant also. And so again, this is a small lot that is in the need of development. And what we're proposing here is developing that particular lot with something that I feel will be viable and useful to the community.
Did you, you were here last month to hear Ms. Osticorn's testimony relevant to the landscaping and the streetscape for the application?
Yes.
Based on your expertise, do you see that as that, that testimony and that proposal has satisfied the requirements of the Oradel master plan for the B-three zone?
Yes. Again, being a new construction, new development, the sidewalk enhancement will take place along Kendrick Mac Road, street trees will be planted, a lot of nice vegetation will be planted, also along the north side, the west side, and the east side. Another point that I want to bring up is, again, we are proposing a six-foot-high fence along the east side of our development. And just as a comment, that if we did have parking in the north or on the east side, those headlights, if you didn't put up our fence, would be facing the residential zone. So in that sense, by us having the parking facing north, again, against the fence and all the arborvitae, we eliminate any noise, anything that may happen or could occur possibly, not that I feel it would, along the east side. not that I feel it would, along the east side of the residential zone.
So by satisfying the goals of the Oradell master plan through the, the factors that you just identified, are those satisfying criteria important or, important and necessary to supporting the zoning ordinance and the zone plan for the Borough of Oradell?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. Page, is it your testimony that the C1 and C2 variances that are being sought in connection with this application satisfy both the affirmative and the negative criteria for this application to be approved by this board?
Yes. As my opinion, that the variances that we're asking the board to grant on this particular application, in my opinion, are minimal. Again, we tried to do everything we could with regard to the buffer, which was, I believe, three locations, you know, three descriptions. Parking being the biggest, they say the most incumbent variance. But the point there is that, based on the prior use and what's going to be occurring here, I again, do not see that being an issue. We do have a permitted use within the B3 zone. There are no bulk requirements with regard to the building in the B3 zone. So again, the only issues that we have is parking on the side yard of the property, the one buffer. And to me, I feel that those are something that the board can look at. I'm sure they make their decision, but I feel that it would not harm this application or the community or the master plan, should these variances be granted.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I'm just going to ask you to take a look at a few submittals that have been presented to the board since last month's hearing, and that are part of the board's package this evening. There are two colorized packets presented by the applicant's engineer, Kirsten Osticorn of Armelin and Osticorn. And the first one is a seven-page document, which is a, it's a 3D imaging or value of the vision of the, of the proposed project. If you would just, counsel, I'd like to mark this as our next exhibit. I think I left it with Mr. Ganiel. Yes, thanks, Mr. Gibb. It's a 3D design of 90 Kinnick Mac Road, submitted December the 23rd, dated July the 11th, 2024. Are you familiar with this 3D design, sir?
Yes, I am.
Okay, in your review of it, does it represent a fair estimation or some visual representation without the actual representation of what the building could potentially look like based on computer-aided design?
Yes.
Okay, can you describe the first page for the board, so we can just, and we'll move to this quickly, but just so that they understand what they're looking at, sir?
Do they have?
They have copies that is, it was provided in everyone's package, I believe, Mr. Jackson's office.
Okay, the first drawing shows the building looking from Kinnick Mac Road East. As you can see, the building itself with the trees and the vegetation is actually a good-looking building. You can see that the sidewalk and the enhancement along the sidewalk to the curb is, is being shown, along with the light fixtures, and it's really an enhancement over what's there now.
I'm going to direct your attention to the left side of that first photograph, sir. Can you please describe that for the board, so they know what we're talking about here?
The left side, it shows two cars being parked in the north parking lot, and we see a row of arborvitae trees, and we see the six-foot-high solid vinyl fence.
Steve, can we get, do you have these?
I don't have, I don't have the PDF on here.
I think we handed out, we delivered copies as well. I have some, I have some to circulate if you'd like.
I'm just thinking about the public, can't see.
I've handed a few out to the public. I have two more I can circulate, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to take.
I have.
No, I mean for the public. If you'd like to circulate to anyone who'd want one. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, absolutely. There you go. We got it.
Mr. Quinn, I think we got it up.
Oh, there you go, okay. Thanks, Jim, thank you, Captain. Okay, Mr. Page, you, can you refer to your, your picture in front of you, or you can look up at the boards.
Yep. As members can see, is one of the concerns that the members they have, or the public, is the parking along the north side. And you can see the arborvitae that are being proposed and the solid white vinyl fence. So the whole idea there is that we're completely shielding the townhouse residence from our parking lot itself.
Now, once those arborvitae are watered and, and pruned, that will grow into a continuous shield, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the applicant's going to maintain those so they don't become untoured, or go into the parking lot, or over into the neighbor's property?
That is correct.
May exceed the height of the six-foot fence?
They will eventually, yes.
Okay. Does that, please continue to the next page, sir. All right, can you please explain to the board and the public exactly what this rendering depicts?
This drawing is a little bit north of the property. Looks like it's taken right on the property line between the townhouse project and the Royal Wine property.
Does that show a rendering of the buffering between the northbound condominiums and the proposed project?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
And as you can see, is a good space between the buildings, the townhouse project and the six-foot-high fence. And then you can see the landscaping that's taking place on the Royal Wine, Royal Wine property.
Just to give the board a point of reference, is where the pointer is right now, is that where the Hubcap Joe's existing hut is located, sir?
That's where it is, yes.
Okay, so by removing that prop, by removing that building, you're in fact enhancing the property immediately, aren't you?
Yes, you are.
Are you enhancing the light air and privacy of that end unit, sir?
Yes.
Are we creating a buffer zone by doing so?
Yes.
Are we creating additional buffer behind that initial planting that fronts on Kinnick Mac Road?
Yes.
And that is in fact the line of arborvitae?
Correct.
All right, Ms. Osticorn had testified last month that the arborvitae would continue at one of the tenants, one of the owners to the north's request, continue the arborvitae down, pass and circle, go around the perimeter of the garbage container, recycling container system.
That is correct, and that's shown on the next.
That's shown on the next slide?
Yes.
Okay, if you would, thank you, Mr. Depp. That's, okay, please describe that if you would, sir.
Again, you can see the north parking lot. You can see the white fence, which is around the dumpster location. Then just to the right of the dumpster, you can see additional plantings of the arborvitae.
Isn't there something missing there from this picture that typically should be there, and is in the site plan and the architectural plan, in testimony? Running along the back of the property.
Well, you can see the tip of the six-foot-high white vinyl fence.
Oh, that's the tip of the fence, okay, got it. All right, that's not necessarily an accurate depiction of the grade change, but it's, it's there, right?
It's there.
Okay, all right, okay. And then the applicant is attempted and taking great lengths to accommodate and keep as many trees for some of the neighbors' requests, and will apply to shade tree board and to replace by caliper and number trees that are necessary and important to the neighbors, to the board, and to the shade tree commission. Isn't that right, Mr. Page?
That is correct.
And along the lines of Ms. Ryder's and Mr. Atkinson's request for an indivisible green screen, the applicant will comply with that requirement of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And that green screen will run the length of the eastern bound property, sir, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's the whole 141 feet?
Yes, again, on the next slide.
And well, that, that screen will grow together. Now, okay, show us, what does this represent, sir?
This represents where the back of the building is, looking from the residential area towards the building.
So you're in the park, you're in the parking lot, looking south of the northbound condominium units, looking at the proposed project, and that's what you'll see?
Yes.
Okay, and those green arborvitae peeking over the white fence will be maintained by the applicant?
That is correct.
Okay.
And as you can see in this particular location, because the parking lot for the townhouse project is at a lower grade than our particular property. So that's why you see the retaining wall, and then you see the fence on top of it, then you see our six-foot-high white vinyl fence and the arborvitae. And as you can see, too, the proposed building does not look as ominous as it does in some of the other pictures, is basically highly invisible.
Well, it certainly doesn't look as ominous as Hubcap Joe's, Joe's does right now, does it, Mr. Page?
No, and when these arborvitae grow, you won't even see the building.
Okay, so that's what our fence in the north will see, at least in the beginning. Okay, please proceed with the next. Now, now what are we looking at here, Mr. Page?
The next three slides or renderings are pictures taken from the residential zone along Beverly. And it would be looking west towards our particular project. So keeping the existing trees are there now, you can see that the building is not highly visible from the houses along the east side of the property.
Now, those arborvitae that are in location between the existing trees, they will grow together as a continuous screen as well, isn't that correct?
They will grow together and get taller.
Okay, and that will effectively hide the view of the building?
Yes.
What's the benefit of having a stockade fence and a green screen and lights required by the ordinance of the Borough of Oradell?
Again, the stockade fence or a solid fence is to provide a buffer between the property, the residential property, and a commercial or retail property.
Does it deaden noise, Mr. Page?
Yes, it does, and headlight glare and other features.
Does it protect, does the arborvitae and the fence protect the air into the backyards and enhance the privacy of the single-family residential owners to the east?
Yes, and also, arborvitae don't lose their leaves during the winter. We're looking at here, you see quite a few deciduous trees that will lose their leaves. So the arborvitae will provide a different, a better buffer than what's there now.
Okay, please proceed to the next.
Again, this is still similar to the drawing we just looked at. Again, you can see the portion of our building in the back corner, and you can see the six-foot-high white vinyl fence that the applicant will install. And you can see one car parked, again, over on the upper right side. As you had mentioned, that the arborvitae, once they become more mature, they will be creating a continuous buffer and wall between our property and the residential properties.
Thereby screening out any view of the cars or the building itself?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the last rendering is still of the same situation.
That depicts the same as the rendering before, correct?
Yes, it's different locations, looking at the back of the property from the residential area.
I'm going to show you, counsel, I'd like to mark this, next one is A8. It's the aerial exhibit rendering, also a colorized rendering that was distributed to the board. Okay, Mr. Page, I'm going to ask you to describe this particular rendering to the board and the public's benefit.
The colored-in section is the applicant's property. Again, the yellowish-green is the building.
Is that proposed building envelope?
Yes, it is.
And is that on the southwestern side of the building?
Yes, it's on the south side of the property. And you can see the landscaping that is being proposed around the site itself. You can see the parking lot that is on the north side of the property. And the gray area on the east side of the building is basically a ramp to cart or dolly product from the trucks in the parking lot down to the back or the storage area underneath the building. No vehicles, in my understanding, would be driving down that location.
No.
Deliveries, again, will take place on 10 o'clock in the morning, because that's when the building opens, and that would be, from my understanding, the only time deliveries would be taking place. And deliveries are not that frequent, and the owner of the building can discuss that a little bit further to the board members.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Page, for that additional information. Is this an accurate depiction of, if approved, what this building will look like from an aerial, in terms of where the building envelope is, and what the parking will look like?
Yes, it is. And you can see the three retail establishments to the south, and you can see the location of the townhouse project to the north.
Does it also evidence, sir, the three existing parking spaces on the frontage in front of this building?
Yes, it does.
So in fact, this, this depiction renders 11 spaces available to this particular location.
Yes. Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Page, for that. Chairman, just to give me another minute, see if I have any other questions as witnessed. Thank you. Mr. Page, you've had an opportunity to review the borough engineers and the borough planners' comment letters?
Yes.
Okay, and I know you've provided quite a bit of informative testimony so far, just in your review of each of those comment letters. Is there anything that perhaps you feel that you haven't testified to yet that might satisfy some of their concerns? I'm sure they will bring to your attention, but to the extent that you know it now, please let us know. I think in Ms. Ryder's letter, she had requested that you define, in her most recent letter, a January 3 correspondence, 2025, there were several items that she indicated that she would like to hear testimony on. The first one would be on item three, whether the buffer is adequate?
In my opinion, the buffer is adequate, and by providing a fence around the areas where the concern is, which is the residential area, and the townhouse project, we complied with the buffer.
And relevant to the dumpster, I know the client is going to testify about its turnover and what's going to go in there, but in terms of the design and what the engineer testified to about on the site plan last month, and on your estimation, do you have any opinion as to its efficiency and effectiveness for this particular proposed use and its location?
This particular use will not create any food being generated, will not be cooking anything, and not be generating any grease or oil or anything along those lines. The only byproduct that they would have would be recycling, which would be cardboard. Again, everything comes in boxes. And a lot of the boxes will be bundled, ripped, shredded, or not shredded, but compacted, and then stored in the bottom of the building itself. And the recycling truck would come around, and they would either bring it out to the dumpster, which is more than adequate to handle that, or they would just wheel it out to the recycling truck at that point. It all depends, too, on when the recycling truck would come to the site. You know, if it comes before hours, then the boxes will be put out in the dumpster. If they come during hours, then if there's a lot of boxes to be taken to the recycling center, then they would bring it out to the truck at that point.
Okay. You had indicated, relevant to the curbside parking, its availability based on A-8.
Yes.
Are you familiar with the Oradell parking ordinance, and can you speak to whether or not there's any restrictions on the availability of those on, on-street parking availabilities?
My understanding is there's no restriction at this location. Other locations, you have three hours or one hour restrictions along Kinnick Mac Road and the Central Business District. At this particular location, since it will basically be only five minutes is what the maximum time would be for someone coming in and out of the store, I, no matter what restriction is here, if it was one hour, that would definitely be compliant. You know, the parking on Kinnick Mac Road would not become an issue. And the other feature is that we do have available parking on-site, so I don't see that being an issue. And then, again, the site further down the road, the existing location, there are a couple of parking spaces there along Kinnick Mac Road. And I'll be honest, I parked there several times and went into the liquor store, and I would be in and out within a couple of minutes if that. So again, I do not. So again, I do not see an issue.
That data did not enter into your report, correct, sir?
No, it did not.
Okay. Mr. Page, one topic we did not touch on is the lighting relevant to the proposed use. I know the applicant's going to testify as to his hours. Based upon your review of the testimony last month, the site plan, and your conversations with Mr. Singh, have you, have you an understanding of what, when the lights will go on, when the lights will go off, and what, if any, impact that will have on the surrounding area?
My understanding, in talking to Mr. Singh, is that the lights will go off when the building is closed, and that's 10:00 at night. They would not be beyond that point. And since he gets to the site at 10:00 in the morning, that wouldn't be an issue, because you wouldn't need lights during that time of the day.
So it would only be for evening use and particularly during winter months, sir?
That's correct. And again, the engineer had mentioned that they do have a six-month looksee, and if he did see any spillage, then that would be addressed. For the shields, when they get them from the manufacturer, they can put shields in the lights themselves, and that way they can direct the spillage from the illumination, from the lights, down to the ground.
Those technical adjustments that are necessary for any overspillage can be done rather quickly and efficiently, isn't that correct, Mr. Page?
Yes, it can be.
Okay, and that's something that's, on other projects you worked on in Oradell, where those adjustments have been made effectively into the satisfaction of the borough?
Yes, they can be made to the satisfaction of the borough. That's just basically an adjustment.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, I think I, unless Mr. Page has something he wants to offer in conclusion, I think I'm completing my direct with this particular witness. Do you have anything else you want to say?
Again, hopefully, I've hit the key points, you know, for the board to make a, hopefully, positive decision. I feel that this application would be beneficial to the Borough of Oradell. It is a vacant lot. Again, I said enough times that the building itself meets all the bulk requirements. The variances that are being proposed are, other than parking, are rather de minimis, and what we try to do is mitigate the buffering by putting up the fence on the north and the east side. Additional landscaping will be also presented as part of this application, and I know that the owner of this particular property would maintain the plant so that they would survive, survive, and if any plant did die, he would replace it. So again, he wants to be a continued member of the community and show them, the community of Oradell, that he wants to make it successful and a positive impact to the community, something that is successful.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I'll offer Mr. Page to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Counselor. We'll start with our professionals, and I'll start with Caroline.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Couple of questions. You indicated that of the two employees, one parks at the municipal lot and the other employee takes transit.
Mass transit, yes.
Right. Would, should the board act favorably on the application? Would there be consideration of a requirement within the resolution that there be no employees parking onsite? Because, of course, the person who takes the bus may get a car at some point, or there could be a different employee who doesn't utilize the bus. So is that something that that would be considered?
I don't see an issue, but I would say that probably the owner, he'll be next, and if he says fine, that's great, because I don't see an issue. Because, again, the parking lot's not that far away. It's about 400 feet.
Okay. So I know you, thank you for explaining the study that you did of the existing, the existing business. Is the existing liquor store approximately the same size as what's proposed, or is it smaller?
Little bit smaller.
It's a little bit smaller.
But the main thing is he needs storage area as well.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The main issue, one of the things that he does require is additional storage, you know, for the the product.
So it's a little bit smaller, but he has more storage in this location as well?
Yes.
You testified, a couple of the variances were C2.
Yes.
And with C2, we always like to ask that, do you believe that the benefit is not just to the property owner, but to the community at large?
Yes, I believe it is.
And why do you think that, in particular with the parking?
What I just mentioned is that, other than the parking, what I just mentioned is it is now a vacant lot, had this little tiny building on it, it's been there for years and years and years. And what's being proposed now is a new building, in my opinion, aesthetically quite pleasing to look at. And the landscaping is going to be enhanced from what it is now. Right now, it's just an overgrown lot. And it's, if you look at the one drawing that's up there, you have the three stores as you head north on Kendrick Mac Road, and we're also within that same alignment. And then we have the parking lot on the north side, and then you go into the townhouse project. So I feel that we're continuing with the retail use of this particular location from what you have on the south side of this building. So I feel now that we are enhancing it. As you know, with Burbidge versus Mine Hill, one of the criteria there for approving a D variance is aesthetics. And I do believe that this particular, what's being proposed here, is aesthetics. It's open, okay, you can say that Huckab Joe's open air because it's just a big vacant lot, but we are still enhancing this by providing the parking lot and all the landscaping around the site. And we also are trying to do what we can do to mitigate this particular retail site from the residential property on Beverly. So I feel this is a benefit to the community.
Can you just go through? I just want to make sure I'm understanding which variances are no longer going to be variances because they're going to be met, and which are not. I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Well, the lighting variance, we will take care of.
You're going to comply, so in my report, that's number six.
Right.
Okay.
And number five is the, yeah, let's look at it. It's a landscaping screen. We have that along the north side and the east side, you know, with a six-foot-high fence. I think that initially, we didn't have a 6.9 or 7-foot buffer on the north side by the townhouse project, so we eliminated that by making the drive aisle 24 feet. So that gave us more room so that we can put that six-foot-high fence along the north side of the property. And then, in reference to the east side, we are continuing the fence, where I believe initially, they didn't have that. They're going to try and do landscaping. So we are putting a six-foot-high fence along the east side of the property.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding the north side properly. Because it is supposed to be 10, right, 10 feet?
Right, that is the one variance.
That is, so that's...
That is one.
Yes, that's still there.
It's going to be seven, 6.9 instead of 10. That's a variance, and there's the zigzag in the rear, because we can't accomplish it given the...
So those are my, that's my number four in my report?
Correct, yes, yes. As per to your report.
Number one, two, three, and four, and four contains two variances.
Yes.
Right? The lot width, obviously, the location of the parking, the number of parking spaces and the two buffer items reference the number four.
Correct, yes.
The landscape screening in five, and the lighting in six.
Comply, will comply.
That are going to be complying. I was getting a little confused between some of the references and five to four, so I wanted to make sure we were clear.
Understood.
Okay, I think actually, at least for right now, that's it for me. Thank you.
Dave, any questions?
Sure, just a couple, just for, so everybody's clear, I guess, on the parking. So the site as it sits today, that's further to the south.
Correct.
How many parking spaces are there today onsite?
To be honest with you, I think there's about five. I didn't really count it.
Current location?
Current location.
It has eight.
Has eight today?
Yeah, Huckab Joe's has eight.
No.
No, 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 the current liquor store.
Liquor store.
Oh, the client can testify to that, I believe he'll answer that question.
Okay.
Five.
He'll testify to that when he swears that, yeah.
You're proposing, under this condition...
Three more, eight.
So eight. So I guess in your testimony, that's sufficient parking for the expansion of the retail space for the, for the project?
Yes, I, it is.
And then, I guess, your testimony also is that you have, there's three parking spaces on the street?
Correct.
And if I heard your testimony correctly, those spaces are not dedicated to the liquor store?
No.
Those are public spaces, so any other stores can utilize them.
That's correct.
But again, your testimony is that the eight spaces are sufficient to handle the storefront, given the turnaround of about a five-minute visit to the store?
Yes, and that would be a maximum, five minutes.
Okay. And I think one of the questions that may have been deferred to you as the traffic engineer was related to the site distance at the site. Did you have an opportunity to look at that on the the site plan and the site triangles there?
Be pulling out of the property?
Correct.
I didn't do a triangulation, you know, a site triangle of it. But as you look at it, the plan, there is a good distance from where you crossed the property line to cross the sidewalk, and then that two-foot-wide decorative walk area. That's enough site distance, because the good thing here is Kendrick Mac Road is straight at this location. So you do have enough distance, and, you know, the speed limit is, what, 30 miles an hour, but people do drive faster than that.
But so it, so there's sufficient site distance there for what's being proposed? Okay. Now, I know, I think you've talked a little bit about the landscaping, in particular along that east side, and you're not able to get like the zigzag pattern as far as the buffering. You know, is there, are there things that could be done to work with the borough and the residents to ensure that there's adequate screening there? I know it's shown a certain way here on the plan, however, there's existing trees we're trying to preserve. Maybe it's more a question for the attorney that you're willing to work with the borough as far as providing additional screening for plantings and stuff for the best of your ability.
Thank you, Mr. Akison. The applicant will most certainly do that, and will comply with the Borough Engineers' request, J3 Commission, and collaborate with whoever to get that done adequately for everyone. I think the goal, the initial goal of the client was to maintain as much, as many trees as possible into the satisfaction of some of the real yard neighbors, and also achieve the requirements of the land use screening. So whatever gets that done, we're happy to do and accommodate.
Okay. And then, I think you had, you briefly talked, you talked about the the site lighting and that it would turn off once the stores closed. Would there be any lighting onsite just for security purposes during after-hours?
Absolutely, go ahead. I think there's sconces on the building. You can check, but we'll check on that, but whatever's required by fire code and by Borough Code will do. But it'll be just around entry and exit ways, whatever's required. It'll be on timer.
I just wanted to make sure, because the way I, the way I heard it was that the lights would turn off, and then it's like, here we got this parking lot.
No, no, I don't think that makes any sense.
Okay.
But I think for, just to make the testimony more precise, any overhead lights that are required, that they would be cut off at that time. And any light that's necessary for safe ingress and grace by emergency personnel would be available 24/7.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions.
Steve?
No questions.
Brian?
No.
Any questions from the members of the board?
I have. In regards to the variances, one of the larger ones, obviously, is the, is the parking capacity. There, there's a couple of numbers that have been floating around in my head, you know, based on your testimony. I just want to make sure I'm clear. Proposed is eight, required is 17. Correct me if I'm wrong, at one time, you anticipate the maximum use at four at any given point in time, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because, again, my counting of the existing liquor store, then driving by probably once every day, that's, that's more than the cars I usually see there.
And then, maximum parking is, is 12?
That's what we counted, yes.
Counted 12?
That was between six and seven at night.
All right. And, and the municipal lot for the owner or any employees, how far is that?
About 400 feet.
400? Sorry.
My whiskers, I didn't shave.
Now, I brought in Google Maps just to see, and it was making some noise. I apologize. The other question I have pertains to the east side buffer zone. This is adjacent to the properties to the rear.
Yes.
You're proposing a six-foot fence along the property line, then there's a grade of roughly 9%, I think it's close to 10 feet.
Right.
And up there, there will be a retaining wall, and it looks like some sort of additional fencing, or no fencing?
Yes, that fencing there is to prevent somebody from falling down to the...
The grade, okay.
To the bottom.
And the buffer will be between the two?
Correct.
Okay. And, and that's all, that's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have one, just in terms of maintaining that buffer area at the rear, how is the access, what is the access?
Well, the fence is along the property line.
Yes.
So there is access from our site down into that area to maintain it, save if plants die or the leaves start developing.
My understanding, would that be on the south? The access is through the south side, between the buildings that are on the property line and the retaining wall that's several feet off of it? Is that the access?
Well, if you can see on the plan up there, there's a break in that fence.
At the, at the east side?
On the east side.
Okay.
Because what you have is, I think Kirsten tried to explain it last time, but it's kind of tough if you don't see it, you know, visually, is that initially, as you go along the side of the building, it's level, but then it drops down.
So the grade's not severe at that point, is it?
No. You're pretty much at grade, so that's why she didn't show a fence.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, Mr. Quinn, if you want to bring up your next.
Yes, thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Page, for your testimony.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call...
Excuse me, excuse me, as I said earlier, we're going to hear from both witnesses, and then we're going to open it up to the public.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call Mr. Singh. Would please come forward, sir?
Hello.
You swear affirm any testimony given as matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name, spell your last name, please.
Amrit Paul Singh, last name is Singh, S-I-N-G-H.
Thank you. It's a fact witness, Mr. Quinn.
Yes, it is, Mr. Quinn. Giblin, thank you. Mr. Singh, can you please describe for the board exactly who you are?
I'm a businessman. I'm in industry for the last 22 years. I have a successful business in Red Bank for 12 years. So we find the same kind of opportunity in Oradell, and we give a trial, and we want to have a permanent location now.
Okay, so you, you've had a business in Red Bank for 12 years?
Yes.
And then you also opened a second business, liquor, wine distributor, explain it, please?
Wine, spirit, and beer.
Okay, and what's the name of that, and where's that?
Royal Wine and Spirits. And one in Red Bank is 24 White Street in Red Bank. The second one is 50 Kendrick Mac Road in Oradell.
Okay, how long have you been operating your business in Oradell, sir?
Four years.
And are you the owner?
Yes, I am.
Are you partners?
I have two partners.
What are their names?
Anvith Tapashya and Barak Patel.
Are they here tonight?
They are.
And you are equal partners in the application?
Um, 50%, and they are 50%.
And you are the three owners of the existing business that will be, if successful, will be moving to the new location?
Yes, same LLC, so everything runs on the same LLC.
Will you, do you currently own the property?
I do.
Where the, just let me finish a question before you answer, if you would please, so we have a clear record. Do you, are you, do you currently own the property where the proposed application is before this board?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and do you own it with your partners?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Relevant to your ownership of Royal Wine Spirits in Oradell, you've been operating that facility or that store for how long, sir?
Four years.
Okay. If you would, for the benefit of the board and the public, would you please describe what your business operation is at your current location?
It's beer, spirit, and wine, mostly for the consumers who come, live close to us and buy for parties and their own personal use.
Okay, are you, do you currently attend to the business at that location?
Yes.
Are you there on an ongoing basis?
Yes, I am.
And is this, in fact, a business that, if approved, will move to the new location?
Yes.
Okay. Are you there every day or five or six days a week?
It's depend mostly five days or Monday to Friday. We try to be there in the mornings, ten o'clock to three o'clock, two o'clock. And weekends, I stay like four o'clock. Saturdays, I have employee comes in the morning, and it's depend, if it's busy, then I come, otherwise I stay. And Sundays, I'm on.
Okay. So currently, you're, you go to your place of business five to six days a week?
Yes.
And you're, in that capacity, you're fully familiar with the operations of your facility and your, your business?
Yes, I do.
And you have a similar business model in Red Bank?
Yes.
Okay. How long have you been in the liquor distribution business?
In business for twelve years.
Okay. How long have you been in the whole liquor distribution business itself?
Twenty-three years.
Okay. So twenty-three years in the business, twelve years as an owner, four years as an owner of a second store in Oradell?
Yes.
And is the current business model for your operation in Oradell now going to be similar to the model that you're proposing for the new location you own?
Yes.
All right. And you're there five to six days a week, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Would you please describe for the benefit of the board what exactly your business operation is? Just go through your day. You come in, what you do, what are your hours, and go day by day and explain to them how your deliveries work and how your customers come in and how they turn around and go out and, and take it from there and express questions between.
So most of the time, I'm there in the morning, and consumers in the morning are very less because it's a slow time, everybody's working. Peak hours are mostly four, five o'clock when they go home and they stop by. After seven o'clock, it just slows down a lot.
So when you're there on a Monday to Friday, you're there, you testify between ten and two?
Yes.
Do you have any customers during that time period?
Yes, I do. But it's like one, two, two clients, three clients at a time, you know, or one or two at a time in the morning hours. Rush hours are mostly when they're going home. In the morning, it's not much business.
Okay. When you're there in the morning, what does occur when you arrive?
Like...
When do your deliveries occur, sir?
All my deliveries are mostly in the morning.
What days do they occur on?
Wednesdays, in the morning, ten o'clock, between ten to two o'clock.
So how do the, how do the deliveries work? When do they occur? How often? Who delivers what? And what do they do?
So beer companies deliver in, everything comes in a box trucks in the morning. So beer companies usually have two guys. They are, if there's more than a hundred Ks, they are out in between fifteen to twenty minutes. And liquor companies, they don't have much. So they're basically parked on the street, and they leave within five to seven minutes.
Okay. The beer companies pull into your lot and they're there fifteen to twenty minutes?
Yes.
And you'd said, you mentioned a box truck?
Yes.
Not everyone knows what a box truck is. Can you explain for the benefit of the board and the public what that is? Is it an eighteen-wheeler?
It's not eighteen-wheeler.
It's not? Is it a twelve-wheeler? Or is it something like an Amazon truck? Can you please give us a description of it?
It's not like Amazon truck. They're a little bigger than Amazon truck, but they are not eighteen-wheelers or twelve-wheelers.
Okay. Is the truck turned off when they come?
Yes.
All right. Two men come. Tell us what happens.
Two men come, they hand truck everything, whatever we told them, they bring inside. And if we need to put something in the basement, they use the hand truck, roll it over, bring it to the basement. That's it. They, they don't, they left.
They have you sign something and they leave?
Yes.
They have a designated route and they have to move quickly as they do their job?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So you arrive in the morning to open in order to facilitate these deliveries, sir?
Yes.
And what day do these deliveries occur upon?
Wednesdays.
No, Wednesdays only?
Wednesdays, mostly Wednesdays only.
Not on Monday at all?
No.
On Tuesday?
No.
On Thursday?
No, sometime if they are back up, then they do Thurs- Thursday mornings, usually Wednesday mornings. They have a route set it up, so they come by the days.
Does anyone come in the evening?
No.
Does anyone come on Saturday or Sunday?
No deliveries on the weekends. They don't deliver on Saturdays and Sundays. They usually deliver Monday to Friday, but they have a separate routes by the days. So they have an area set up. I do it set up for Wednesday, so mostly they come Wednesday mornings.
Okay. And they don't come on other days?
No.
How busy is your store, your current store, when those deliveries are made?
In the morning, there's nobody there when they come in. Usually they come the slowest hour in the mornings. Before I come in, they are there, we took the deliveries, and they leave. Usually customers start coming in around eleven o'clock, because one client might be in the morning. After twelve, one o'clock, people start coming in, and that time, everything is done.
Okay. You also testified there are, there are liquor trucks that come in?
Yes.
Can you describe the nature of those trucks, sir?
Same, same thing. They come in to, one driver, one helper. They bring the stuff in, and we sign the paperwork and leave. Liquor trucks don't have that much. They usually ten Ks, fifteen Ks, and they leave in between five to seven minutes mostly.
Okay. For your current location, do they bring it downstairs? That he's bringing the store and you bring it downstairs?
They bring it downstairs.
Okay. Now, the board wants to know for the new location, you're going to follow the same business model and the same delivery schedule, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you explain to the board exactly how this project was designed to facilitate an ease of delivery drop-off and to quicken the pace of an already efficient drop-off?
So it's going to be a similar kind of operation because once they set up the delivery hours, we set up with them, or they set up the route, they have to come to the same route. They don't change the route for anybody. So they'll come there, deliver it, and they're going to, whatever they needed, they're going to put in the basement, and they just leave.
Okay. So we had to be a little bit more explicit so everyone understands. So you're going to pull into the parking lot?
Yes.
And they're going to come in on Wednesday mornings?
Yes.
Sometime after ten o'clock?
Yes.
But in the morning?
In the morning.
But not on other days?
No.
Okay. And it's not a beer delivery? They're not having to come with a beer truck, but they're coming in with a box truck?
Yes.
Right? They're pulling into your parking lot, and what are they doing?
They're pulling the parking lot, they bring a hand truck over and fill up the stuff and bring inside the store.
Are they going to go down the ramp and into the basement in the proposed, if approved?
If they go to the basement, only if we have a lot of more stuff comes in. Most of the time, the small stuff comes in and stays upstairs.
Got you.
Yes.
Okay. So is that mostly the liquor deliveries that is coming through the opening, the open door on the first floor?
Yes.
Okay. And that's a quick delivery?
That's a quick delivery.
So when the beer trucks are the only ones that'll be using that ramp going down to the basement, is that correct?
No, beer trucks doesn't go in the basement. They stays upstairs.
All right. What purpose will be using the ramp then, Mr. Singh?
Just for the liquor. When we have more bulk orders, most of the liquor industry does buy thirty Ks, forty Ks, so we buy that like every three, four months. They come in and deliver in the basement, and then we bring it by the hand truck upstairs whenever we need to use it.
And when you bring it by the hand truck upstairs, by what means do you do that?
Means like whatever the stuff we need upstairs, we use it, then we fill up on the hand truck ourselves, and then we bring it. Now, in the new location, we're using a lift. We're putting a lift there.
It's proposed you put a lift if this in fact is approved? Is that what you're saying, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Lift meaning a elevator?
Elevator, yeah.
Okay.
So we bring up the stuff upstairs from then. We don't have to use the ramp with the hand trucks anymore.
Okay. Do the, when the trucks arrive, do they turn the trucks off?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no fumes coming out?
No.
And they come on Wednesday morning?
Wednesday morning.
They either come in the front door for the most part, or they go down to the basement if there's some heavy liquor deliveries?
Yes.
Okay. What percentage would be coming in the door there? And then they would be quickly leaving?
And like, what do you mean? What was it?
Okay, that's fair. If this is approved, how many of the, you have ten deliveries, how many will be going down to the basement and how many will be going in the front door?
Maybe one going in the basement, and if, there's nine coming upstairs.
Nine going in front, okay. Just want to know what kind of use and access that ramp is going to be for?
Yes.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right. Now, if you would, just to back up a little bit, there was, there is informed comments from both the professionals for the board. They want to know exactly what the, and the public also want to know this, the trash and for recycling. So please describe, based on your current business model, what is the trash that's generated by your existing business in Oradell and how you would tend to dispose of it at this new location?
So trash is whatever we eat or drink, and that's the only trash. There's no other trash. Disposable is the cardboard, so we break them, we wrap them, we throw in the container. And it's, trash is usually every other weeks because we don't use that much trash. The cardboard recycling is every other week also.
So do you have a private carter that comes onsite and takes that garbage and the recycling boxes off, out of the trash compactor and out of the recycling compactor?
Yes. It's usually early in the morning before even opened up. Usually they come like four, five o'clock maybe, and they take everything.
Okay. So in your, your boxes or, Mr., you heard Mr. Page testify, correct?
Yes.
He had indicated that some of the boxes are going to be broken down and wrapped and kept in the basement until such time they might be brought upstairs for recycling purposes? Did you hear that testimony?
Yes, but usually we break everything out and throw in the dumpster.
Goes in right away?
Yes.
Okay. And if you need to call it more than once every other week, it would come more than every other week, is that correct, sir?
Yes.
And they would come, in fact, as often as you needed them to if you, if that was necessary, isn't that correct?
Yes.
All right. Now, if the board made the condition of approval that they come more often, you would most certainly do that?
Yes.
Right? Now, Mr. Atkinson had a question before relevant to the maintenance of the property or...
The lighting?
Oh, the lighting. And the lights being off, when the lights get turned off at the property? The lights, the floodlights, I'm sorry, the lamp lights for lighting up the parking lot will be turned off when your doors close?
When the doors close. When we close the store, everything's turned off.
Okay. And you have emergency lighting and you'll be compliant with the, the fire code?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I thought it was something else, I'm sorry about that. But Mrs. Ryder did ask you about employee parking. She asked Mr. Page, and this question is for you. Now, can you, would you, are you willing to make it a condition of approval by this board, given concerns about parking, to have all employees park as a condition of approval, park at another location of parking across the street from your existing location?
Yes. I have one employee who does that. Other employee use the bus, so he comes here, and then I'm the only one who's in the morning there, and I use the park. The one guy only comes four days a week, and one employee is a full time, so he's there almost six days a week.
Okay. Now, relevant to the, your business hours at that location, your current location, can you describe for the board what they are and will you follow them at your, if approved, at the new location?
Yes. It's going to be the same hours I'm doing right now.
Say what they are.
So Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we open ten o'clock in the morning and close nine o'clock. Thursday, Friday, Saturday is ten AM to ten PM, and Sunday is twelve to seven PM.
Twelve to?
Seven.
Seven PM. Okay.
As per township law, so.
Okay. And if the borough codes were to change relevant to opening and closing, you would...
Yes.
You'd most certainly comply with that as you have today, isn't that so? Okay. So during the time, in the time periods, if approved, that you will observe that this new location will be the same as at the current location?
Yes.
Based upon the hours that you're currently open, do you believe and find that you have adequate parking onsite currently to handle the customer flow into your business?
Yes, I do.
All right. Have you had occasion to observe the customer parking at your current location?
Yes.
And what have you observed, sir?
So right now, I'm, the situation with, so right now, I have five parking spots. Mostly clientele who stays in the store, they know what they need to get it. They come in and out. We have two registers running, and that's the reason we have wine cooler by the door. Evening clients, when it's rush hour, they mostly come buy the cold wines and leave.
And what, how much time do they typically take, sir?
Maybe two minutes. If they need a cold chilled wines, they usually two minutes in and out. There's a one or two client who want to shop around, and they want to see the stuff, they're going to take up to five, seven minutes or ten minutes. Most of the customers are not. They are mostly in for two minutes, three minutes, buy the product and leave.
Does anyone spend more than twenty minutes on the location, sir?
No, no, they're not.
In your testimonies, you've owned liquor stores for twelve years?
Twelve years.
Fifteen years, twelve years?
Yeah.
And is your experience of operating liquor stores for twelve years, have you, is it that your typical trip generation or time period of customer spends in the stores?
Yes.
Less than that?
Yes.
And how much less would you say across the board, based upon your twelve years of operating these facilities?
So the location we have right now is, the one in the Red Bank is totally different. It's more a restaurants area, so its peoples are very fast. We have more chilled wines there. It's a bigger parking lot there. People just go to the, to eat, and they buy the cold wines and they stay. Here is mostly residential. So here, people in and out, they don't want to spend, waste any time, they come, buy their stuff and leave.
Does in fact the interior layout of the proposed store, if approved, lend itself Does in fact the interior layout of the proposed store, if approved, lend itself to a quick in and out for your customers?
Yes.
How so, sir? Just describe the interior layout so that everyone understands.
So right now, the, we're going to, the reason we have a brick wall on the side because we're going to put a counters there, and we want to put a wine cooler on the left side of the store. So when they come in, sorry, the right side of the store, so when they come in, there is easy access for them in and out. If we have the beer cooler, or beer cooler in the back, sorry, the wine cooler on the left side, the clientele who's looking for stuff is going to take three times the time because they have to walk all the way to the side. And the wall there on the Kinder Mac Road, we tried to put the registers there. So we don't want, if we put the glass there, there's two reasons. Something, first, the sunlight affect the wine so much, the same situation we're dealing with the customers right now. They don't want to buy those wines, which is affecting by sunlight. The second thing is register is running on the, by the side, by the wall, and people's looking from the backside. As per township requirement, we are only cover, allowed to cover 20% of the windows. If we make the whole wall windows, we're not able to cover anything there. And if we put something in the back, it would look very bad. So we're trying to put the building as the township requirement saying, we don't put any glass there, we don't affect by sunlight, and we don't want anybody's looking us when we're working in the counter.
Okay. Will there be any lottery sales on site, sir?
No.
Are there any food sales?
No.
Okay, are there, will there be organized wine tasting? Do you have a wine tasting area there? Is that for ad hoc and personal use?
So...
Not your personal use, but consumption of potential customers?
Yes.
Okay. Will you be running any events from that location?
No.
The board's concerned about parking surge and things of that nature, so that it's important to answer that question.
No, as per ABC law, we are only allowed to pour twons, and we cannot have a private entrance in there. My license is category D, so I can only serve them twons at per time. And it's only two hours tasting provide, and the two hours we provide them, when is a peak hour or like weekends, it's not every day. And 90% of the customers, like 60% of the customer, don't even taste the wines and stuff unless there's something they really like it. We have to provide as site industry where everybody does that.
So your operation is designed to accommodate customers and get them in and out of the, your facility, your business quickly, isn't it, the faster? Okay, and that's suitable for their needs?
Yes.
Okay. Just to speak to the current operation and the refuse and the recycling uses that occurs at that location. You currently use a private carding service?
Yes.
And is that the same one that you would be using if this application was in fact approved?
Yes.
Do you find that the current usage level and calling and their attendance at your location is pertinent and necessary and appropriate for, with the generation of volume at that location?
Yes.
Will you, by necessity, have to adjust it upward in the event that you have more, you generate more recycling or more garbage, sir?
Yes, if there's, if we need to change it, they'll come every week and pick up, but they're coming in early morning when nobody's there.
Okay, so and that's an in and out, you have the green dumpster, and it'll just pick it up and drop it and go? Okay, all right, and that's one of the bonded insured contractors that do this private carding for commercial businesses along, can you correct? All right. Regarding the property, you indicated you owned it, and you had bought this property. To your knowledge, is there any easements, restrictions, encumbrances on the property itself?
No.
Okay. Relevant to the snow removal on site, you might be seeing some this week. So how does it currently operate for you with snow removal, and how do you attend to that issue?
We have a company who we hire. They'll automatically come all the time, put salt in there, remove the snows, and they clean up before we come in.
All right, well, here's the removal part we need to elaborate on, so explain to us what you mean by that.
They'll come, they'll, if we need to remove the snow from there, they have a, like, TOTRA kind of, no, sorry, the, the snow pouring thing. So they pour everything, put the salt in the morning. If there's more than enough snow, they just take them with them.
So they'll take the snow off site?
Yes, it's more than...
So the eight available parking spaces will be available at all times? Is that what your testimony is?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell us when, Mr. Page indicated your peak time is typically Saturday, late Saturday afternoon, Saturday evening?
Yeah, Friday and Saturday evenings mostly, yes.
Okay, and at that time, I believe it was your testimony, that you typically have two employees on site?
Yes.
And you find that that's adequate for, to handle that surge in your business?
Yes.
Is there any requirements beyond having the two employees there that you have in order to satisfy your customers' requirements?
No.
Okay. And then on Sunday, how many employees will you have on site?
Just one.
So one employee working 12 to 7?
Yes.
And then you have to close by borough ordinance at 7 p.m.?
Yes.
So four days a week, you're not open past 9?
No.
And then another three days a week, you're open until 10 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay, and other than the safety lights and the protection lights and building code, fire code lights, none will be on?
No.
No one will be able to use the parking lot at that time, is that correct?
No.
Okay, are you open any other holidays, or do you have closed days?
No, we have no closed days.
No closed days, okay, but you'll observe the borough ordinances in that respect, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any assignment of parking spaces at the current location?
No.
And is it your intention, if approved, to have any at this current, this proposed location?
No.
Okay. All right. Given what you said so far, is there anything else about your business that you wish to share with the board that you think would shed light on the value of what your business brings to the borough board?
Yes, so we're trying to be a good season of the order and bring to the neighborhood, to us, instead going to River Edge on other towns. We give a trial to the business in order, we find successful, and we want to have a permanent spot, so we bring all the locals to us, instead going to other towns.
And you're vested in the community based upon your purchase of this property, sir?
Yes.
Is your sole intention to operate your existing family business with your partners at this location?
Yes.
Okay, and you anticipate being in Norwood if approved for decades to come?
Yes.
You understand that there may be certain conditions or requirements imposed upon you, including maintenance of fences, trees, and the entire buffer zone in the surrounding location, as well as protecting the property and the surrounding properties from any of your construction activities?
Yes, I do.
And you'll be required to sign some documents with the town regarding development, a development agreement, and any indemnification agreements relevant to that construction on the property?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to present this witness to the board for questioning, subject to any potential redirect that might be necessary.
Thank you.
So we'll start with our professionals, Caroline, once again.
Thank you, I actually don't have any questions.
Okay, Dave?
Only question, just so it's on the record, Mr. Singh, I know we had asked the question of the attorney related to the working on the landscape buffer along the east side.
Mm-hmm.
You're in agreement to that?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's what I was, I forgot.
Steve?
That's all.
Nothing.
Brian?
No questions.
Any questions from members of the board?
I have a question. You testified that deliveries are made mostly on Wednesdays?
Yes.
Mostly around 10 a.m., but it could be as late as 2 p.m.
Yes.
When the delivery vehicle arrives, does it park next to the building on the north side where the parking lot is?
Yes. Right now, they don't, so we have enough room, so they don't park in the parking lot, they park on the right side of the parking lot. So they deliver and they leave.
So at the time of delivery, it would effectively limit the number of, will reduce the number of parking for, for customers?
So right now, they are doing it, but when we have a Kinder Mac Road right now, right now, the only situ, right now, the parking is inside, and the door is on the front. In the new location, we have door on the side, and they'll just deliver from the Kinder Mac Road to inside. It's easy for them to do it because on the trucks, especially the beer trucks, they have doors on the side, not in the back.
And when the delivery vehicle goes to the back of the building on the east side?
Yes.
I don't know if you're the right person, but is there sufficient turning radius for the vehicle that will be accessing that space?
They don't go mostly back of the building.
I think, just to explain to Mr. what exactly, how that, the hand trucks will be used there, the trucks, where the trucks will be located, so you don't need to use the churning radius around by the dumpster in the rear of the property. They unload the trucks at the front of the property?
Yes, they do.
We'll explain that to them.
Yeah, they unload the front, yes, they do.
So the vehicle doesn't go, the vehicle itself doesn't go there?
No, 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 the driver does, or the helpers does.
Thank you for that clarification.
I have a question. So I'm looking at your store plan.
Yes.
This is the floor plan.
Yes.
It's PA4 is the number, and I just want to clarify, you had indicated regarding the windows in the front on Kinder Mac Road?
Yes.
There's several reasons why you wouldn't have a full height window.
Yes.
You know, light, it happens to be one of them.
Yes.
But the other was, you had indicated it would be a hardship for you, based on your current design?
Yes.
The window would be right behind the cash register.
Yes.
And so I was looking here, and I see you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 registers, three of which would be in front of the window. It's not that one, it's that one, yes, that's the plan. If you scroll down, you can see there at the bottom was the register, and down at the very bottom is the window to Kinder Mac Road. And would it be a hardship for you to shift that whole register over? Let's say, and this drawing to the right, into the wine tasting area in order to prevent that?
It is.
It would be a hardship?
Yeah, because we want to be, we want to have a register close to the door.
I see.
Because when customers comes in, it's easy because something happened, they're stealing or something, we have to, we want to be, the liquor aisle is close to it, so we, where the most expensive stuffs are, we want to be close to it.
Okay. Okay, so it's not a simple solution to just include a large window is what you're saying?
Yes, it's affecting us big time, especially for the wines, and we don't want people watching us what we're doing when we're inside, especially when the transactions are happening.
All right, that's the only question I have, thank you.
Respect to the deliveries, just to clarify some, so there's no intention for a delivery truck to pull into the parking lot?
There is, if they pull it, so usually they back up, it's early in the morning, and most of the time in the morning, we have no clientele. If, even my existing location, we hardly get the first customer by 10:30, 11 o'clock, and even there, most of the customers, they come in, I have a couple of customers, they're in walking distance, just walking right now, and we have nobody there in the morning. Mostly clientele start after 12:30, 1 o'clock, and that time, beer deliveries are already gone.
So in that particular case, putting aside the parking conflict with customers, is a truck pulling in or backing in?
So truck, truck backing in.
So he's going to turn across Kinder Mac and then back into the...
They usually have a, you know, they're experienced driver, they're small trucks, they are not 18-wheelers, so they just come in and deliver the stuff and leave on the time. When they have more than 20, 30 cases, if they only have five, seven cases, they already prepare all the box trucks, they have their stops already, so that's how they pack them. So they know which stop is going where, they're coming by stops, and they have the stuff already prepared. They just in and take the stuff out and leave. They have box numbers, they have stop numbers.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the traffic flow as the truck does whatever it needs to do to get into the parking lot? And to exit. If he's pulling in, he has to back out. If he's backing in, he has to kind of turn across Kinder Mac?
Well, most of, if I may, Mr. Stress, just want to clarify when these deliveries are going to take place. Will most of the deliveries take place when you get there at 10 o'clock? I believe that was your testimony. All right. I think Mr. Kane picked up on that there were some that might be in the afternoon. Can you break it down for the board exactly when most of the deliveries actually occur? So we can anticipate some of your concerns and address them?
Yes.
You know this information, so convey it.
Yes, no trucks comes together, like, it's not like two, three trucks or four trucks come in at the same time. Usually trucks have a time period and a stop, and when they come in, they come one by one. Suddenly in the holiday time, maybe they come two trucks at a time, mostly not, it's one truck. And if they have less stuff, less stuff, they never pull in the parking lot. The only time they pull in the parking lot, when they have holiday time, couple hundred cases, usually they park on the street and they leave within five to seven minutes. Only, that's the only time they pull in the parking lots when they have more than 200 cases, otherwise they are not.
Okay, and those larger deliveries, do they typically take place in the morning?
Morning.
They take place in the morning?
In the morning.
And then that, is that when the ramp is used?
No, ramp is not used that time.
Okay.
It's a beer trucks, though, they mostly deliver from front door.
Got.
We're now putting beers in the basement.
Okay, got it. So most of your deliveries take place before 12 o'clock, is that your testimony?
Yes.
Okay, and most of deliveries are going to be drop and goes, five to seven minutes?
Yeah, yes. If there's more than 100 cases, they have three, two, three helpers, which they deliver the beer, they put inside, and two guys coming in, one guy's bringing in, and they're done in 10 minutes.
So it's only large deliveries of hard liquor that's going to go to the basement using the hand trucks via ramp?
Yes.
Okay, what time of day, and how often do those come? I thought you said they come once every few months?
A couple of months, every couple of months, they have, we have...
What does that mean, once every three months, once every four, once every two?
Two to three months, it's depend on what deals that the ABC is issuing or the liquor companies are having it. It's not every month or every week.
Okay, so once every couple of months?
Yes.
Any other questions from members of the board?
I do, Mr. Conal. Your existing location, are you proposing the same delivery pattern as existing now?
Yes, we cannot change them.
Is there been any incidents of, you know, accidents or anything with the trucks?
No, nothing so far.
Go ahead.
Just a, is, are you, I'm not 100% familiar with the other location. Is it a similar parking layout where you're alluding to traffic flow comparison? So I understand what you're trying to clarify?
I would say it's similar.
Yeah, it's, what, 100 yards south?
Yes.
It's 100 yards south of the park.
I know, wait, I just never analyzed the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually a smaller parking lot right now, than we're going to have bigger than that.
So the trucks pull into that parking lot or back in when they need to?
Yes, they do, when they do.
For liquor, once every two months?
Yes.
Okay, just be clear.
Yes.
Any further questions from members of the board? So at this time, I'll open it to the public for any questions. I do want to state that, Mr. Chairman, we would like to get our third applicant at least up so they can introduce their project, so we are going to have to keep track of the time because we don't really want to start any activity after 10:30 if possible. So we'll see how the public comment goes, and we'll go from there.
Can we put a time limit on the public comment?
It's dated three minutes.
Three minutes? Is that okay?
No. Public has to be permitted to ask questions, you can limit comment, but not questions.
So if we're running over, we're going to probably have to pause again so that we can allow our next applicant to come up and introduce their project. So with that...
David Banfield, I have two questions. One will be for Mr. Page, but the first one is for the board. There are variances involved in this project. Is there a reason it's coming before the planning board as opposed to the zoning board?
None of the variances are devariances which would require it to go to the Board of Adjustment.
Good, thank you.
It's basically a site plan application which is within the jurisdiction of the planning board.
Thank you. Mr. Page?
Hi, Bill. After a long and prosperous business, the applicants will have their well-deserved retirement, and the building will be for sale. But whoever buys it will have, I mean, it may not be suitable for an arcade in terms of the, I'm sorry, that's a comment, not a question. Bill? What happens when the building is sold in terms of the, you know, the parking?
Typically what happens, let's just say, if the building is sold and another use wants to go in there, then they have to go in front of the planning board again to get approval.
And would be a variance?
Similar use, then, that would hopefully go with the land.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Diane Fisk, 90 Beverly. Will there be a restriction out of the parking lot, no left turn onto Kinder Mac Road? That's a, it's a very, very, very busy road. And granted, Mr. Page said he doesn't get very many clients, but what happens at holiday time? When, now you're in a residential area, it's a little bit different. And if people driving by also see you on Kinder Mac Road, hey, it's a liquor store, I can stop in here, but now I've got to go back down to maybe River Edge, and they'll want to make that left-hand turn. And then my, so that covers my two points about the holiday traffic and the no left turn. My other question is about the trucks that would, may park on the street if they have a large delivery. That would very much limit the access, site access of traffic, of people trying to pull out of Argyle or wait, it's bad now.
Is this a question?
Sort of. Okay, and my, then I'll let that go, I'll just, I just put that out there. And my last question is, where that, in the green area on the site plan, all the way down in the buffer area, there's an opening. What's going to happen there? That's right in my backyard. And anybody coming can run through that parking lot then, run through that hole? And this is being built in a residential area with little kids. I have little kids next door to me that are like four and five years old. There's little kids across the street. I would just, we spoke about this last week, I'm sorry, last month, and Ms. Kirsten said that she would address it, and it's still there on the December drawing.
Thank you, just, we did discuss the last month, Ms. Fisk, and Mr. Page is here to answer your question as well, but as he testified, and as Kirsten did in last month, there'll be a six-foot stock, double stockade fence and six-foot arborvitae, creating an imperious barrier for anyone to travel. The retaining wall, there's a break, I think Mr. Dressel addressed it very properly before. How are we going to get down there and maintenance those properties? Could folks like yourself want to maintain those original trees? And my client is absolutely striving to do that. I'm sure that Ms. Ryder mentioned the report, the shade tree committee is very cognizant of that. We want to take care of those trees, we want to take care of those arborvitae, we need to sprinkle them, we need to weed them, we need to take care of them, we need access to them. In addition, for the reasons that Mr. Dressel raised, so to access them, we need to get back behind the retaining wall.
Just to clarify, I want to jump into, there's a fence at the property line.
Yes, correct.
That's, so that stops anybody from going from the proposal to your property?
Yes, no one can get through to your property. Yeah, no, they won't be able to. That's a legitimate concern, I believe we addressed it.
Then are you saying that I'm going to make coffee for Mr. Singh so that he can come and water the arborvitae?
They're on his side, and he has a requirement because they're on his property. Welcome to that. We'll all come for coffee, we'd love to do that.
57, the road? The one foot, the one, wait a minute, let me see how I'm going to say this. Would it be, sir, a big problem if you made the building one foot less on the east side? How would that affect your business and your flow?
It's an engineer question, I think they will answer that, or architect questions?
No, no, it's about your business, would it affect your business because you'd be losing the space?
You don't know the answer, you don't know the answer. We can have one of the other professionals answer, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, how do you want that to be answered? I'm not sure, again, how to answer a hypothetical. It's a land use hearing, we produced a permitted use proposal within all the bulk zone requirements, with the exception of a few that have been identified, and we're looking for a land use approval. So it's not a redesign of a project, it's a conforming use, and it's conforming, we're using 30% of the building coverage when we're entitled to use 40. So to ask us if we're going to take another foot off is kind of begging the question. We're already conforming on that particular issue, so I'm not sure of the basis of the question, if perhaps we can get some...
So what's the answer?
To what it is, then we can, might be able to answer a question that's based in fact.
You can't answer the question? Okay. When you get the deliveries, are they going to deliver, will a truck be able to pull up to the sidewalk and bring the boxes inside? Or whatever, they're going to deliver from the sidewalk? Or do you have to, are they all going to come in to the parking area?
No, sidewalk.
They're all going to come from the sidewalk?
Yes.
So it's not going to be, that, will that not, are you, is this going to become a loading area? And we lose the parking spot?
Can we ask for a question that's based on the testimony?
Oh, this is, he said that, he's just said that they're going to bring it in from the, from the street.
Counsel, I don't want to summarize the testimony, but...
Didn't he just say that?
I believe Mr. Singh testified the deliveries would take place Wednesday morning.
I believe Mr. Singh testified the deliveries would take place Wednesday morning. They'd take place anywhere up to 10, 15 minutes.
If he can answer the question, fine. If he can't, that's acceptable.
Thank you, counsel.
I'm just asking if it's going to become a loading area or a designated loading area now, or is it going to remain a, a street parking spot?
It's going to remain a street parking spot. It's not, delivery is not every day, so we're not taking the speed every day.
Okay, just, just for a few minutes, then, that's what it is, okay. Okay, the area that you have, the east side of the building, this, it's all concrete, they're all still, right? That area? Is a delivery truck going to be able to go in there? Is it light enough?
Can you direct, he's not certain what you're referring to, can you please be a little bit more specific?
If I could point with my pencil, this area here.
We're now putting the delivery trucks in the back.
No delivery trucks going in there, sir?
And no parking here, right?
Nope.
Oh, the wine tasting area. How long is that going to be like? Is it going to be like a big, a big amount of time that people are going to sit there and have wine tasting or?
My license is not required there. My license is not required to have event in there or private event in there. It's just the consumers who comes in. If they would like to have something, a sip, and it's too boring, they can have it while they are buying stuff or they're just going to leave. My license is just de-licensed. I cannot provide any settings or anybody to wait there to have wine tasting.
So you're not providing the wine, they can open their own bottle there?
No, 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 they're not. We're providing the wine, I'm just saying that they're not going to sit there and have the wine. We are, as per ABC law, we only providing two ounce. If they are standing in the line or they are there or there's two customers comes in, they're just going to have a sip and leave.
Okay.
They're not drinking in glass, they're drinking in a small, poorer glass.
Okay. Well, how long do you think that's going to be able to, an event like that would happen?
Maybe once a month or if some, some, we have new wines, that's the only occasionally we do.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Keith Donovan, one of the townhouse owners at 100 Kinder Comack Road, north of the proposed property. My concerns are traffic and parking. My concerns are that because Mr. Singh runs a great store and now he's going to a nice, newer store, which I believe will be great for our community, and I want the plan to get approved, but they will be crowded, especially in the beginning. And I know a lot of people who like to shop there and I'm not 100% sure, I'm not near an expert on this, that eight spots will be enough. And I'm not just worried about that, I know there's the three street parking spots too, but when my father and stepmother come visit my wife, they use one of those spots. It's, it wouldn't just be for the liquor store, it's a public spot and they don't come all the time, but they pop in once every two weeks and they stay for an hour, 90 minutes, and that's a car in one of those spots for an hour and 90 minutes. So that's just something to think about. And the other thing is traffic and I'm not concerned about most of the hours of the day, I'm concerned about that five to seven o'clock range. It's already bad. And I'm thinking about the cars on Kinder Comack going south towards River Edge, trying to make a left into the brand-new liquor store, which is going to be very nice. They're going to start a buildup of a little bit more traffic on that side. And then the ones coming northbound on Kinder Comack, if there is no spots at a busy time, where are they going to spill to? They're going to end up making a right onto Waity Place, which is how you would get to us. And then they have the option of going into the municipal lot by Hoffman Field, driving around Beverly and going back up, I think that's Argyle, or they turn around possibly in our parking lot. And that's not something that we would like during that five to seven hour range. Those are my only concerns. I think Mr. Singh runs a great business, I shop there. Again, I would love to see him get approved, but I think these are valid points because Kinder Comack, I feel like is getting worse and worse every year, especially at rush hour. So that's my two cents, thank you.
I have one more question for Mr. Page, I'm sorry. Mr. Page, when did you conduct your survey?
The initial survey was done in May of 2024. But like I mentioned earlier, that I drive past there probably every day and I also look at Royal, you know, wine as to what it is now.
My question was, how much will his business increase over the holidays? What is his, you know, business, how much does he do over the holidays as compared to his day-to-day?
I would say that the business would probably increase the same amount it does now. You know, maybe he'll get a slight increase over the holidays, you know, but I can't really say how his, how business is going to do.
Parking problem and, you know, there have been times that they parked on Beverly and walked up to Kinder Comack for whatever they needed, so, you know, they'll do what they have to. And I was just wondering, when you did your survey?
Right, in May.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak at this time? So I'll close public. Mr. Chairman, we're going to want to get our next applicant up to introduce their project. So, Mr. Quinn, we're going to carry this over to the next month and then we will pick it up in February.
February next meeting is first Tuesday?
First Tuesday, yes.
Okay. Just one piece of housekeeping before we depart. Counsel, can I have just a review with you? I have the rest of the exhibit list.
Sure.
If we can just pre-march them, they're mostly comments, letters from the borough planner, borough engineer, and Eric Timzak, County, Burton County.
If you want to pre-mark those and then just send it to me, that's, that would be, but on the record, on behalf of the applicant...
Quinn, hold on, hold on one second, I'm going to confer with the chairman.
Well, I mean, unless there's any more testimony to hear or any other questions from the board, why don't we just vote on it?
As the board feel, okay. I, I just want to make sure that we give our next applicant time to present their...
Well, they'll have 15 minutes.
Chairman, so you had the public ask questions, they're permitted to make comments...
Right.
At this point.
So we'll...
So you have to open it up for comments?
Yes.
I see, okay. All right, so we're going to have to hold it over to next month.
Do you want to just open it up to public comment and see how that goes?
For five minutes?
Well, we can't time it, right?
Yeah, time.
Well, I won't time it, but we, we'll have to end it a quarter after.
Okay.
And if we postpone it, and if we have to continue it, we'll continue it next month.
Okay, so I apologize, Mr. Quinn, but we will now open it up to the public for comment on this application.
Hi, guys, I'm back. I just wanted to say as a possible new neighbor of Mr. Singh that I do hope he gets approved. I'm going to leave it up to you guys to take my comments about the traffic and parking. You guys are on the planning board, not me. But I just wanted to say that, Mr. Singh, I go in his store two times a month, three times a month. They're helpful, they're clean, they're nice people. We pointed out some concerns that I think are valid, but no matter what would be moving here, I think we'd have concerns, different types of concerns. So I think he's a good addition to the community, he's been here for four years and hopefully for many more.
Thank you.
Sam Tripp, this is 327 Maple Avenue. I'm a customer of the current liquor store. Get good service, lousy location, but good service and good, good product. I've been looking forward to this move for a couple of years now. I think it's a, it's a, it's a good, good location, but the only problem I have, I, I attended all the master plan meetings and we talked about the brick facades. Windows are included in that. You didn't, you know, you didn't just have, you didn't ask the applicant to give us a brick facade with no windows. It's very important. I, you know, windows have three purposes, display, safety, and, and you, you want to look into the store, you want to see what the store is. So I would say a, a little redesign on the interior to give a better look to the building on the outside is, is warranted. And I, I think there's been too much discussion on why you can't do it, but not enough discussion on how to do it. But once again, if you look, if you look at all the stores in Kinder Comack Road, they're windows, they're big windows with displays and that's the purpose, you know, you want to see what the business is and it's important to look into the store. So I, I would hope we would consider this, you know. I don't think we wasted three years in the master plan and not, and not enforce what we, what we talked about, you know. Some of you attended it and were, were integral parts of that master plan, but the public, the public was adamant on what they wanted to see. Once again, and lastly, I'm all for this application, I've always have been. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, are we making comments?
Yes.
Well, thank you, because I had to go to the bathroom. Okay. I know this man because I'm the single-family home right behind his business now. And he's been very well with me, we get along well. I go back there and I, I do things, I clean behind my fence and stuff, and he is a good person. And I think that it will be a good thing also to have this place, but I don't know what's going to happen with, when he leaves, what's going to be where, where it is now, where he is now, what's going to happen there? I'm kind of apprehensive of that. The other things I wanted to say, I just, I just, I just feel that we, we should be able to have that 15-foot buffer because we wanted that from a long time for, for the people that, that live next to commercial properties. And if we can take away that one foot and maybe extend it on the north side or something and make up for the space that he might lose on the one foot on the east side, I think it would be very, very good and he would need that variance. And, and then we wouldn't open up Pandora's Box for the next development to ask for another variance on commercial properties and single-family homes. And that's the one point that I have, thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak?
I just, one question. I don't think I got an answer about the possibility of a no left turn out of his parking lot onto Kinder Comack. Is that within your purview or would it have to go to somebody else? Would it have to go to the county?
Well, we would probably want to speak to our police department and our traffic authorities to make, give us, give the borough, the mayor and council some guidance. Steve, the current property does not have a restriction on a left turn, right?
No, but they need to be approved by the county.
By the county, okay.
It's County Road.
So I, I would imagine, Steve, if we felt that making left turns out of that parking lot was becoming dangerous, it would be addressed accordingly?
You might be able to put that in the resolution, you know, review it within a year.
Is, so the, the proposed is a new curb cut, correct?
Yes.
So they do have to go to the county for that, don't they?
Yes.
If I may respond to Mr. Dressel and Mr. Cornavale's concerns, we did file the application with the Burton County Planning Board. We did receive, I communicated with Eric Timzak, who's assigned to the Borough Board, Del, he's the county planner. He did provide comments, it's in your package, and they are relevant to the curb cut size, but the, the county was in favor of the, the use and did not have any manual uniform traffic control design changes relevant, and that's a County Road, Kinder Comack. So they do govern and the state governs the mileage limit and the access.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a very dangerous area there because as the townhome people can attest to, they have had people drive up on their front lawn and get very close to the trees that are in front of their doors.
Okay, I, I appreciate your comments. This will be our last speaker, our last public comment.
I guess, first of all, I recuse myself, but is it appropriate for me to make a comment as a member of the public?
Yes.
Okay, so Vince Scalzone, 102 Beverly Road. I just want to say that Mr. Singh runs a very good business, I support the business and I support the application. But similar to other comments, I would just recommend, and again, this is a recommendation, I know it's not binding, but when we did the master plan back in 2018, some of the design recommendations would be more traditional storefront, window frontage, really for, for aesthetic reasons, you know, better appearance for pedestrians and drivers. So I know that Mr. Singh said that it would be a hardship and, you know, obviously, you know, I, I trust that that's true. However, I would just say if there is a possibility to reorient the store, to allow for that, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
I will now close it to the public. I'd like to ask members of the board if you have any other questions or comments at this time. Mr. Chairman, I'm satisfied that we've heard enough information on this application and I would like to bring it to a vote this evening if everybody is supportive of that. You'd have one question for Steve. Steve, the window design did not require any variance request, right? As far as the size of the windows that are currently being proposed on the building, they are...
The signage?
The windows.
The size, no.
Okay. Just wanted that to be on the record. So with that, unless there's any other comments, Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve calendar number S-159-24, site plan variance release for Royal Wine and Spirits. Before I ask for a second, I just want to check with our attorney and our engineer to see if there are going to be any special requirements or conditions associated with this application.
I have a conditions of approval that the applicant will work with the borough to add additional landscaping wherever possible and that no employees will be permitted to park on site.
Anything else?
I would just have it that they satisfy the comments in our November 26, 2024 engineering review letter. I know there was a number of items, I don't think they ever formally submitted a updated site plan, the only site plan we have is that color rendering, so I know the, the engineer was going to work on all of those different items that were discussed at the last hearing.
Applicant will comply and will provide revised plans if approved.
I would say we would also want the planner's report as well as part of that condition.
Thank you. I also will point out that we didn't discuss it, it's in my report, that there would be a fee associated with this application upon, if it's approved, it's the developer fee, fee for the COA, excuse me, Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So that's in my report and it's, it's a common procedure, but I just want the record to be clear that that's a requirement.
Thank you. Do you have all that, Mr. Givlin?
I do.
Do I have a second?
A second.
We'll call Steve.
Yes, Mr. Snyder will be sitting for Mr. Scalzone. Mr. Snyder? Yes. Mr. Dressel?
I have to abstain, I was, I was not present at the initial application, so I did not hear the initial testimony.
Okay. Mr. Kang?
Yes.
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Cornavale?
Yes.
Mr. Darian?
Yes.
And Mr. Flegging?
Yes.
Thank you, members of the board, council, appreciate your time and your patience in hearing this application. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good luck. So as the hour is getting late, I'd ask our next applicant to come on up and I appreciate your patience. And I appreciate your patience. Mr. Chairman, this is calendar number S-160-25, site plan variance relief for Habitat for Humanity.
So Steve, we'll do 15 minutes. You'll have to present, open, and then we'll finish the meeting. Right.
Once again, thank you for your patience. I do, before we get started, I do want to clarify. This is a site plan variance relief or just a soil-moving application?
Just a soil-moving application.
Okay, I'm just reading the agenda, so I apologize. This is a soil-
We had the same question.
Okay. It was just misstated on the agenda. So this is just a soil-moving application for calendar number S-160-25, Habitat for Humanity, corner of Reese Avenue and Kinder Comac Road. What we're going to do is allow you to, have you introduce the project. And then we'll probably have to pick it up next month, but we can at least get through the initial introduction. But we'll see how it goes.
Excuse me, councilman? Just, I just wanted to say I'm going to have to recuse myself again because of the same reason. I'm within the, my residence is within the area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scalcione. So who's going to be presenting on behalf of this application?
I will, sir. My name's Gary Kuhl. I'm the Director of Construction for Habitat for Humanity at Burton County.
Great.
Swear or affirm any testimony given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, Subegun.
I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Gary Kuhl, K-U-H-L.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with the project. We are very grateful that the borough has donated this property to us to build a single-family affordable home. And in doing so, we've designed the building to be neighborhood-friendly, to fit in with the neighborhood, and also to be within all of your bulk requirements, as you could see by our zoning approval. This is a rendering of the building that we are going to construct. It is, again, a single-family home, three bedrooms. For those of you that are familiar with the site, there is quite a slope that falls off to the right side of the building. And we have addressed that with retaining walls, which you could see one of viewing on the left side of the building. There's also another one beyond the right side of this photograph. It's a very modest home, but it will fit in with the neighborhood. I actually had an opportunity to meet some of the neighbors. I introduced myself. We seemed to be well received. Actually, some of the neighbors inquired about helping volunteer to build the house. Again, the soil movement relevance. The slope has created a situation where we need to flatten the pad where the building will go. So then we're going to have that tiered retaining wall look. So the extent of what you see is really the extent of the flat pad of the property in front of the house. We have put the driveway on the left-hand side of the house for the purpose of allowing traffic coming off Kinder Comac Road to get as far up that hill as possible before slowing to enter the driveway to reduce any chance of there being an accident. As far as the project in general, kind of what you see is what you get. That is what we will be building. We do it with volunteer labor. And we do it in an expeditious and very professional manner. We've actually had construction officials that have offered to volunteer with us because they were impressed with the quality of our workmanship. That's really the project in a nutshell.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to continue, if we can, and have Mr. Atkinson.
Please.
Based upon your letter of December 23rd?
Sure. Just have a couple of questions, just to put it on the record as well. So as far as the application, so it's here for a soil movement application. The total cubic yardage of soil being moved is 273 cubic yards, which includes the cut and the fill for the property. We have reviewed the site plan related to the site grading and the proposed site grading. We have no objection to what's being proposed as the, you know, as far as the site grading and stuff for the property. Appears there's no impact on neighboring properties as graded. The one, we did have a couple of questions related to the sizing of the stormwater system, which I'm assuming your engineer could work with our office to ensure that it meets the requirements for that.
Absolutely.
I think you're close. When we ran the calculations ourselves, we were pretty close to where it needs to be. But we would like the calculations from the engineer for that, the system. Like I said, they are proposing stormwater management on the site. Just needs to be slightly adjusted as far as the total volume that's being stored on site. The other question I had was, as far as the proposed site improvements, it looks like you're going to be, there's a note that says you're removing four trees on the property?
That is correct.
Are any trees being proposed to be replanted?
We have not proposed any, but we are not adverse to doing it. We usually do plant trees. But with the way that the site was working out with the different grades, we didn't want to commit to anything. We were going to wait for comment. And then we will comply with, you know, what you guys come up with.
Okay.
And I believe the replacement is one for one?
It's really dependent upon the caliber of the tree size that you're removing. That dictates what it is. The plans didn't really indicate the size from what I saw.
I believe they were all 18-inch.
Okay. Yeah, so whatever the requirement is in the code for the replacement, that should be.
Okay. Yeah, we're happy to do that.
Okay. As far as proposed lighting, whatever lighting's being proposed on the structure, will be compliant with the borough's code?
Absolutely. And we generally do very little lighting outside. If anything, it's a garage light and a porch light. That's about it.
Your typical house light.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, as I saw, all the retaining walls that are proposed on site are, they're denoted on the plan as being less than three foot or less, which do not require wall stability calculations for that. So those are the main items that I had. All in all, they did a good job of putting the application together. Just with those couple of items that we just need to work through.
Okay, thank you. Steve, do you have any question?
No comments.
And Caroline, I know you didn't do a report for this one, but do you have any?
Nothing, nothing.
Brian?
No.
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
I have a comment. I just, I, in looking at the tree ordinance and I've reflected on it, this is maybe opening up the door to suggest it. If the tree falls within the allowable footprint of the proposed structure in this particular application particularly, I, you know, I'd like to consider it being a waived fee. If it is within the allowable footprint of the structure, it shouldn't depend on us for that.
I don't, I don't know if the board can waive fees.
I'm putting it out there.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Steve, I would just like to see and get commitment from the applicant that they'll comply with the borough engineer's requirements for landscape and slope stabilization and dealing with the disturbance to the site. I did have one question on the seepage tank, though.
Sure.
I don't see any elevations of the top of the tank here. What's, how much is this below grade? Because it is on the slope. So I just want to be concerned that nothing's sticking out.
No, it won't be sticking out, from what I understand.
No, it's all subgrade, and we normally put a minimum of two feet of cover on a tank like that. Could be more.
Yeah, those are things that we want to work with the engineer on.
Any other questions from members of the board? So I'd like to open it up to the public if anybody has any questions or comments.
Comment. Would you commit to having a veteran with his family on this particular project as part of the approval?
This is not dedicated for veterans. This would be affordable housing only. But that doesn't mean that a veteran can't apply.
Would you give preference to that?
Veterans, and we love to accommodate whatever we can. At this point, though, this is not designated as a veteran home.
Would you give preference to a veteran?
Maybe our board president can answer that question?
Do I talk or do I need to swear?
Swear or affirm any testimony given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, Subegun.
I do.
Name and spell your last name, please.
Jonathan Senos, S-E-N-O-S.
Thank you.
So our site selection, Family Support Committee does all the selections for the housing, for low-income and moderate housing. We go by all the guidelines down that they have in Trenton, New Jersey. We have had instances where we built houses primarily for veterans. We just did one in Washington Township last year. We have an active military member in this family lived there. The Town of Lordell has not yet designated. I ask you to consider designated whether it's going to be moderate or low-income housing. We can start the marketing, put together the package, and define whether it's going to be either for a veteran or for additional family. But we have an equal opportunity across all segments and all genders, et cetera.
So it's possible that you could get a veteran there?
We will consider that, but there will be no promises.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment? With that, I'll close. Public comment?
So just to follow up on your statement about the project in Washington Township for the veteran. How was that project orchestrated that that could be dedicated to a veteran being placed in that house?
We generally have a rotating schedule depending on needs. So there was a family that reached out, and they knew four military families that were looking for homes who were moving back from overseas. They really didn't have a lot. And they really didn't have a lot of family in the area in the United States. So what we did was we worked with the city of Trenton. And we said, we have these F4 applicants. We'll collect all their paperwork, and we'll go through the vetting process and looking at income, citizenship, et cetera. Once we did go through that process, we identified one family based on this criteria. And what we did with the other three families, we put them on kind of a waiting list. So some of the other three families didn't meet all the criteria. Two of them, they were over the salary range by, we'll call it $2,000. It was very minimal. The state has very strict guidelines around that. The other family decided to move in with, which we'll call it, with their family for the time being. We are in contact with those families. And we did say in the future, if we do have homes that we dedicate to military members, we will re-enter those individuals into the pool at that time.
So how does that work, though? You come to the borough, we want to partner on a project. You're going to donate. Like, let's replay this again. Is that something the borough could have requested of you in that partnership? That we want that dedicated for a military family?
We can request that. It could still be requested. What has to happen first is the borough needs to dictate whether it's going to be low or moderate housing. We will say that moderate income individuals, we have a bigger applicant pool than low-income housing. However, you know, we understand there's challenges on both sides, correct? And as we go through, if the borough still wants this to be for an active military member, we have not started marketing. We're waiting for affordability designation. And we can run without marketing and designate this property to an active military veteran or retired veteran. So we do have that flexibility and capability at this time.
I appreciate you clarifying that.
You're welcome. Any other comments from members of the board? So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve calendar S-160-25 soil-moving application, Habitat for Humanity, corner of Reese Avenue and Kinder Comac Road. Do I have a second? Second.
Is the motion and the second subject to meeting all the requirements of the borough professionals?
Yes, it is. You have everything captured?
I have that.
Okay.
And Mr. Snyder is filling in again for Mr. Scalcione. Mr. Snyder? Yes. Mr. Dressel?
Yes.
Mr. Kang?
Yes.
And Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Carnaval?
Yes.
Mayor Coth?
Yes.
And Mr. Darian?
Yes.
And Mr. Flegging?
Yes.
Thank you, good luck with the project.
Thank you. I have one final comment. We will be having a dedication ceremony coming up in the near future for groundbreaking. All will be invited. And we hope to see you all there at that dedication within the next month or so. Thank you. And thank you for your time tonight, and sorry so much.
Do you have a record for the quickest application?
I'm glad we were able to get through it.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Carnaval?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then we'll move on to business buildings and signage. Mr. Kang?
So last month, there was an application for the address 387-393 Kinder Comac Road for Game Changer. That has been approved. Another application for a UPS store location at 285 Kinder Comac Road was submitted a few weeks ago. Mr. Depkin has confirmed that the proposed sinus size was a little bigger than what was allowed. And it has not come back to us for approval yet.
They just submitted another plan, but, you know, we haven't sent it to the board. We can do that next month.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Regional planning coordination, Mayor Coth?
I'll just be brief. So the borough is part of a multi-town litigation with the state pushing back on the process by which to designate our required number of affordable units to be constructed. That was heard in state court. The stay that we requested was denied. I believe that there is a desire on the part of the conglomerate of towns to appeal that request. But the borough has been proceeding all along with preparing the necessary steps to move ahead with the DCA's guidance regardless of the lawsuit. There is a committee that I appointed to deal specifically with affordable housing that consists of the borough attorney, our special land use council, Mr. Hines, the administrator, myself, council president Carnaval, Chairman Flegging, to provide some guidance on the matter in a more expeditious fashion than the time in which the board meets. So we will keep you up to date on that. We're working on finalizing some things. We have a deadline on the 30th to submit to-
31st.
31st, to submit to DCA our acceptance of their number or our challenge of their number. So that's in progress.
Thank you. A zoning, I have nothing to report. Master Plan, Open Space, Environmental, and Circulation Systems. Mr. Darian?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have completed our town survey. And tonight, all planning board members have a copy of the draft survey. Our goal is to have you look through the survey. If you have any questions or comments, please address them to me. And I will share them with the subcommittee. We are hoping to have a meeting within the next two weeks to review the survey results with our professional, Mr. Francis Ryanair from, I forgot his company. I apologize.
DMR Architects.
DMR, thank you. DMR Architects. And based on those comments at the subcommittee meeting, he will be putting together a final presentation and hopefully presenting to the public on our next meeting in February. And then at that point, the presentation will be posted on the website and available to everyone. In terms of participation, I did some little research. We have approximately 8,200 people in the borough. If you look at the age groups, I cut off the age of 20 to 80. I know that's a broad range, but that brings us around 5,400 people. We had just over 1,000 people participate in the survey, which gives us around a 19% participation rate, which is an excellent number. I mean, you can, you can argue one way or another. You know, we have 656 people between 20 and 29. I don't know if all of them participated. It's the same thing for 70 and 79. But roughly 19%, 20% is a really good number. So I think we had a good participation. I think the results are going to say a lot. And there's actual, the population size is large enough for it to be significant, large enough for it to be significant, if I could throw out some statistics. So I'm just happy to announce that. The subcommittee members, I'm assuming, will be the same as last year, except Mr. Scalcione would be interested in replacing Tom Kelly. He was previously on the subcommittee. He's very familiar with how we operate. I think the goal is to meet on the 14th, if that's available to committee members, so just get back to me, and we'll schedule our next subcommittee meeting. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Darian. Historical preservation, Mr. Carnaval?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, we are in the process of completing updated architectural plans for the renovation of our train station. The project is moving along nicely, and by having these updated plans, the borough will be in a much stronger position when we seek grants for the full renovation of the train station. And I'm working with our borough administrator, Mr. Hines, to be able to apply for that grant in 2025.
Thank you. Old business. New business?
New, I guess, since it was brought up. We need to find a date other than the 14th, there's a council meeting that night.
Okay.
Sorry.
Life of the chairman.
Trying to do it sooner than later.
It seems the length of this meeting is making up for lost time in 2024.
Yes, yes. Okay, I'll open to the public.
Well, as soon as 50 Beverly Road, the 186 units that they're asking us to have that was designated, I think we should challenge it. And I can't see 40 buildings, three stories high, 31 units, being built to satisfy the mandate in Oradell, because that's what it would take for the 1,240 units, with the developers giving us 15%. Forty buildings, three stories high, 31 units. Oh, by the way, can we have the planning, what do you call it, survey given out to the public, or can we pick it up and look at it, or?
Yes, I mentioned that our consultant will be giving a public presentation in February, and at that point, it'll be available for the public.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Has been living this hell by Israel for decades, not for, not for 15 months.
Musab Abu Toha, I want to thank you very much for being with us. Palestinian poet and author, will link to your piece in The New Yorker, Requiem for a Refugee Camp. He's the author of the award-winning poetry collection, Things You May Find Hidden in My Ear, Poems from Gaza. His latest book is called Forest of Noise. Up next, we look at President Carter's legacy in Latin America with Pulitzer Prize-winning historian Greg Grandin. But first, we'll play a clip of President Clinton, of President Carter, when I-